All right, we're a few minutes late, so let's go ahead and get started. We'll go ahead and call this study session to order. Let's go ahead and have a roll call.
Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen. Hidalgo Ferring. Martin Peck. Rodriguez Waters. Mayor, you have a quorum?
All right, let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do you have any motions or other issues to discuss before we begin? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to public invited to be heard. All right, first, we'll start with Gordon Pedro. If you could please come up, everybody, state your name and address for the record. Everybody gets three minutes.
Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive, Longmont. I attended the first two hours of your meeting last week. Lots of drama and a few surprises. For me, the biggest surprise of the night did not receive any press coverage. It was announcement by the mayor that he and the city manager had been meeting with owners of the Life Bridge property in Firestone regarding re-annexing to the city of Longmont. The mayor stated that he had asked the city manager to schedule an executive session so that the council could receive legal advice regarding how best to entice the Life Bridge property owners back to Longmont. The mayor's announcement was an attempt to forestall tonight's discussion regarding a potential policy change in the use of metro districts for residential subdivisions. I would like to share a few reasons this announcement was a surprise. First, for nearly two decades, I have watched the various owners of these properties repeatedly shop for the best development opportunity in Well County, in Firestone, and Longmont. Only Longmont has an assured water supply. In August 2007, the Longmont City Council approved an ordinance annexing these properties. In December 2007, a concerned Longmont residents submitted sufficient petitions to force a special election regarding Life Bridge annexation. The only time in decades, maybe ever, that petitions were used to force a special election for a Longmont annexation. In January 2008, instead of risking an annexation defeat, Life Bridge withdrew its annexation request and sought a so-called "better deal" by annexing to Firestone. Since annexing to Firestone, scores of oil and gas wells have been drilled in some of these properties. Why should Longmont residents support annexing these toxic industrial sites into our city? How would that be compatible with existing council policies regarding setbacks and public health? How would such actions be compatible with your sustainability goals? It was a surprise to hear that Longmont officials believed that an executive session is in order to firm up enticements to encourage landowners to de-annex from Firestone and re-annex to Longmont. A move guaranteed to increase our sprawl, force the inefficient extension of our services, and saddle our existing residents with more costs. With all this history these properties carry, I'm shocked that the Longmont residents here of this scheme by chance. Longmont City Council members, before you go down this path, I encourage you to listen to more than your own voices in executive sessions.
Thank you, Mr. Pedro. All right, Wendell Pickett.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Wendell Pickett, 3813 Florentine Circle. Tonight, I'd like to address this concern of metro districts and revisiting whether or not residential property should be included in those. It is a very critical tool for developers and cities to jointly work together on a metro district. Service plans have all kinds of ways that you can have control over the district and limit exposure for future homeowners, but it is a critical tool to driving down the entry cost and creating affordability, especially in smaller homes, by allowing for infrastructure to be paid for over time by property taxes with lower interest rates. It's a very critical thing, and I think that readdressing this again after you just settled it this early spring continues to send a signal to the development community that things are not settled here. I think you have plenty of controls in place in your existing ordinance, and it should go forward as it stands right now.
Thank you. All right, Pat Davis.
My name is Pat Davis. I live at 1709 Harvard Street, Longmont. Mayor and members of City Council, my comments are about residential metro districts. I am aware that the Longmont City Council has passed a metro district ordinance. I say, please overturn that ordinance. If anyone here, like me, has had a difficult time weighing the pros and cons of this taxation tool in order to determine whether you would want to support it, I strongly urge you to read the Denver Post. The Post is currently investigating the inner workings of metro districts all up and down the front range. Their investigative reporters are writing compelling accounts of how these metro districts are working, and the reports are disturbing. The newspaper is also publishing eye-opening articles from guest writers who have been directly involved in or impacted by metro districts. Bottom line, according to the Denver Post, their investigation has found that Colorado's metro districts create billions of dollars of debt and leave homeowners with soaring tax bills. My conclusion is that when a city government gives approval to a selected developer to create a residential metro district, the city cedes its authority to that district and now has little or no control over its operation. With no oversight, the developer can put in place a board of directors that has free rein regarding establishment of homeowners' taxes and how the collected funds are managed. Per the Post investigations, many of these boards may include the developer himself and friends or family members as well. In my opinion, a metro district gives more benefit to the developer than to the development. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Hughes.
Evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Marilyn Hughes, 1126 Fourth Avenue. I've spoken at council for years, but I have to say this is the first time I've actually felt somewhat afraid to speak my mind because of the level of animosity at council meetings lately. However, I am speaking tonight against residential special and metro districts. Most people don't know what a special and metro district is. They're a special purpose governmental unit that exists separately from local governments with substantial administrative and fiscal independence. Longmont has prospered and grown without the use of residential special and metro districts for years. In fact, residential metro districts were not allowed as part of a Longmont ordinance. That ordinance has now been changed, and City Council is considering granting special and metro district status for residential development. What the residents of Longmont need to know is that a special and metro district is basically giving the taxing and bonding authority to the developer to cover infrastructure. If granted, the elected officials are giving away the possibility of oversight, and there is seldom any media scrutiny. In other words, once formed, there is little to no control or authority. Your votes won't matter at that point. As a longtime, 47-years resident of Longmont, what I see now is an abundance of development all over the city. It appears that special and metro district status is not needed to spur on residential development. Then why is it being considered, especially since investigative reporting by the Denver Post indicates that in many of these districts, the taxes have become increasingly steep beyond expectations of a homeowner, and there's no recourse. A small group of usually the developer and family and friends are the sole voting members of the district. In my opinion, it's basically giving away democracy. To quote Megan Schroeder, opinion editor of the Denver Post, "Every year, our local Colorado elected officials give millions of dollars of taxing and bonding authority to developers without blinking an eye, leaving many unsuspecting Colorado homebuyers paying the bills for decades. Those bills are steep, at times crippling, adding up to more in property taxes for the roads, water, sewer, and parks in these neighborhoods than residents' traditional taxes." What she fears, as do I, is that with special and metro districts, this higher debt owed by Colorado taxpayers will result in an unwillingness of voters to approve needed tax increases for their cities, counties, and schools. This is not what I want for Longmont. Please return the ordinance that does not allow residential metro districts. Thank you.
James Kenworthy.
James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. I wonder how many times I've said that. Thompson River Ranch is in Johnstown. It's a special tax district like the one you will be discussing tonight. Mr. and Mrs. Strickel bought their property in 2004. Tax that closing was $818. One year later, the tax was $3,500. Two years after that, the tax was $4,400. They could afford the mortgage, but the taxes they could not pay... Taxes to the governments did not go up. Taxes for the special district, Thompson Crossing Metropolitan District Number Four, increased every year they owned their home. Mr. and Mrs. Strickel lost their home to foreclosure. You can multiply that story by, what, 10,000 times? The property owners pay, and the developers reap the profits. If you enable special tax districts, you will make the developers richer, some of the homeowners will be ruined, and the rest will be paying through their nose almost forever. Please do not enable special tax districts. Don't be a part of that. I want to read some headlines from the Denver Post. "There is little transparency for metro district fees that are supposed to benefit the community." "In the Wild West, Colorado metro districts and developers create billions in debt, leaving homeowners with soaring tax bills. Colorado district debts can take homeowners decades to pay off. How developers use bonds, mill levies, to ensure that they are repaid. Metropolitan districts and how my community, Solterra, landed in a mountain of debt. Colorado's penchant for allowing developers to tax homeowners for infrastructure is out of control." Don't do this.
Thank you, Mr. Kenworthy. David Droge, or Droge? You can correct me when you get up here.
Hi, my name is David Droge. I live at 4217 Florentine Drive here in Longmont. And kind of like the earlier speaker, I also feel a little intimidated being up here. And it's not only because I'm uncomfortable speaking in public, but I spent most of the day at work watching videos of our past couple of meetings, and so that's why I'm here tonight. All of us here tonight, all of us are here because we care about what happens here in Longmont. We elected all of you. Everyone on this council is here because a substantial number of people in Longmont voted for you. They want you to be here. When you treat each other with disrespect, you're treating us with disrespect. So I voted this past November, and a couple of you are on the ballot. Congratulations. The public has indicated that they're willing to trust you. They're willing to trust you to guide this city and lead its citizens. They trust you to set an example for others to follow. The curious thing about this ballot, even though you were on the list, you weren't on the section that said "to retain a judge." I'm not here to pass judgment on the ethics of what might or might not have happened with regards to the heated discussions regarding phone calls and emails, but I am here to express my dismay that the way this has been handled and hand-delivered to the court of public opinion is very unsettling. That's an understatement. It hurts to watch. We elected all of you. When you trust, when you treat each other with disrespect, you treat us with disrespect. What you say and how you behave matters. I see anger, impatience, and resentment just driving through Longmont, and this has got nothing to do with the roads or the snow. This is a normal thing, no. But not long ago, I used to be able to drive through Longmont without hearing horns of impatient drivers because of somebody slow in front of them. It's not that unusual anymore, and it's not because of our transportation system. People are angry. There's a lot of tension in the community, in the country. We need to try and put some cool water on the fire.
Actually, take some more time. I forgot to start it, so it might not have been the full three, so take a few more seconds.
If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. We need you to be part of the solution. We all need to be better people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Droge. All right. Sheri Malloy.
Good evening. Sheri Malloy, 2113 Rangeview Lane. Longmont was recently named the fastest-growing city in the country. Is this a good thing? The more growth we have, the less quality of life we seem to have. Almost daily, I hear people complain about traffic, long lines at stores, banks, et cetera, and parking, especially downtown. This has happened very quickly, and it takes twice as long to get across town as it did just a year or two ago. Tonight, you'll be discussing special metro districts, a policy that was approved earlier this year. This policy should be scrapped because if Longmont is the fastest-growing city in the country, we sure don't need to be luring developers with incentives and perks. The justification that it helps developers build in challenging areas is slanted in favor of profit over people and planet. The argument that City Council will be the deciding body approving applications is problematic because councils change. Indeed, this very council is in a crisis of basic manners and communication at present. Last week, the Denver Post ran a series of articles exposing some of the many problems with special metro districts. David Magoya, 20-year veteran reporter, spent seven... Sorry, eight months investigating metro districts. He followed the money. The articles outline how a small group of individuals, the developer and/or builder and some associates, create debt, elevate taxes, and approve charges that homeowners must shoulder, often indefinitely. Metro districts are their own form of government with little oversight by city governments and no liability. Homeowners have a tough time figuring out what sort of taxes they face or how to get a say in operating the very district that governs them. RTD is a special district. We all know how well that's worked out for us. Special metro districts hurt uninformed homebuyers. The justification that there will be disclosure when a buyer signs the purchase contract is faulty. Everyone knows people don't read the fine print on these things. We also know realtors want to close the deal and will gloss over additional fees and taxes. Changing subjects. I truly believe all seven of you have good hearts in your wish to serve this community. I can't imagine any of you are feeling very good about the current climate of this council. Challenging situations are opportunities for self and collective reflection. People who are hurting often hurt others. Our reflexes to strike back when we felt we've been wrong. Painful though it may be, I invite you to consider taking the high road, look in the mirror, and self-reflect on how much you might have contributed to the present ugliness. Requiring a fair amount of courage, I invite you to spend more time reflecting about how you might contribute to making the ugliness better, perhaps even beautiful. To quote Buddhist monk Thich Nhat Hanh, "No mud, no lotus." And the Serenity Prayer reads, "God, grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. May each of you listen to your inherent wisdom." Thank you.
All right, Lynette McLean? I'm sorry. Lynette McLean, come on up, but Marilyn Belchinsky is going to go first, if that's okay. Sorry. You're on deck, though.
Marilyn Belchinsky, 1703 Whitehall Drive. This is an article that has previously been published in the Longmont Observer that I feel warrants sharing with a broader audience. During the discussion of the Hour Center matter at the City Council meeting on November 19th, Councilmember Joan Peck asked Mayor Brian Bagley... Councilmember Joan Peck asked Mayor Brian Bagley why he failed to inform her of Julia Rush's Our Center complaint. Mayor Bagley replied that he did not want to be an accessory to a crime. If the mayor was so concerned about becoming an accessory, why didn't he refer the Our Center complaint to City Attorney Eugene May and let him handle it? Eugene May is the legal expert for the city. He could have dealt with the matter. At the very least, the city attorney could have informed Councilmembers Peck and Christensen of Ms. Rush's complaint. Instead, Mayor Bagley sent the Our Center emails to Councilmember Tim Waters on Wednesday, November 13, at 10:08 a.m., a day after Ms. Rush contacted the mayor. Councilmember Marsha Martin received her copies of the emails from Mr. Bagley at 10:09 a.m., a minute later. Two days after that, on November 15, Mayor Bagley apparently thought it was necessary to send copies of Ms. Rush's Our Center emails to the Longmont Observer. It's clear that Mayor Bagley wanted those emails to become a news story since he sent them to the news outlet. John Fryer of the Times Call requested copies of emails that were provided to the Longmont Observer in his open records request to the city on November 15. For the entire week of November 11, Mayor Bagley never informed Joan Peck and Polly Christensen of Our Center's complaint against them. The two councilwomen received news of the complaint from Times Call reporter John Fryer. Mayor Bagley also neglected to inform the two councilwomen of his plan to hold an impromptu discussion on the Our Center matter at the November 19 city council meeting. Peck and Christensen repeatedly told the mayor and Councilmember Tim Waters that they were not at liberty to talk about the matter because it was being reviewed by the Boulder County DA's office. But the two men did not seem to care. They went at the women as if they were prosecutors on a TV show. Why did Mayor Bagley?
Thank you. Cameron Grant? I'm sorry. Lynette McLean, come on in. Cameron Grant, you can come down and get ready. Sorry, I already crossed off your name, but you can go.
Mayor Bagley, in council, my name is Lynette McLean, and I live at 763 Sandpoint Drive. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I know you've got a new council now, and you've got a new way of working together. You've got to do a little norming and storming. And I understand that happens in all groups as they learn how to work together. But I think enough is enough now. And the lack of respect and the lack of decorum has really got to change. And we're really disappointed in what we are witnessing here. And I really, I think that you've been asked not to discuss city business on social media. And I think that has to stop. It's really unethical, it's inappropriate, and it's very divisive. It's very hurtful. I think I'm requesting that you select or appoint an ethics committee to help you decide how you're going to handle complaints. Because I think the people who have been complained against really have an obligation to let them know and to handle it completely differently than you did. What you say and how you behave matters. I just really liked that. I heard that from another person. The other thing I want to weigh in on is metro districts. Of course, you know that I've talked about these before, and they benefit developers only. We worked really hard, all of us worked hard in this community to get you elected. And you are our leaders. And we want you to represent your constituents. And I know you've spent a lot of time with these developers. And they are not your constituents. They are not. They are not why you are here. So you need to listen to your constituents and do what they're asking you. I know you say, "Oh, Denver Post articles are just wrong." Well, I'm proud of my vote. Nobody can convince me of other ways. But you're here to be convinced by your constituents. So you need to listen to what they're telling you and what they're asking you to do. Lead us, but listen to us also. And please stop the infighting. Thank you.
All right. We all get it. No more clapping, please. All right. Bruce Robbins, you're up next. But yeah, we'll go with Cameron Grant.
No one ever claps for me, so I think we'll be okay. Cameron Grant, 2227 Bluebird Drive. Good evening. I'm here to talk about affordable housing, but in the context of your metro district discussion later this evening. I'll take exception to one of the comments we just heard, which is that metro districts benefit only developers. I think that's exactly backwards. That what metro districts do is build rec centers. They build parks. They provide public improvements. They allow for a certain level of housing to happen that wouldn't happen without that financing tool. And yes, there are a lot of other tools that people can use for financing, a traditional mortgage, other out-of-pocket spending. A metro district is a tool that enables some things to happen that won't happen without that. Yes, it can be abused. But just because a tool is abused doesn't mean you throw it out. I've had a lot of friends and clients that struggled with banks that were behaving inappropriately during the recession. We don't cancel deals with banks in the city of Longmont just because they've been abused. You can see that across all sorts of industries. From the perspective of affordable housing, what metro districts can do is enable the city to provide housing and services to its residents that aren't going to be here without it. As some of you know, I spend a good amount of time on the concept of affordable housing. And our goal is to provide full-spectrum affordable housing here in the city. There are tools that we use to provide very low-cost housing to people that have extremely low incomes. A metro district helps fulfill the workforce housing element of that as well as provide a higher quality than we'll get without it. So again, my overarching message is when you have a tool like this that has proven to be valuable but has also been abused, regulate, don't obliterate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Bruce Robbins.
Hi, Bruce Robbins, 1952 Chadwick Court. I've heard a lot of talk about big, bad developers. And I happen to know quite a few developers, and I happen to like them. They're regular people. I don't think they're out to stick it to the little guy. In fact, last time I checked, we have a highway named after a developer in this town. And if it weren't for developers, we wouldn't have a town. So in talking about metro districts, as the previous speaker said, they can be abused, but they can also be a great tool. And what I would like council to consider is improvements are going to get paid for. They're going to get paid for on the front end without a metro district, which is going to drive up the cost of housing roughly 5% to 10%. How does that affect the people in the lower half of income? Not necessarily affordable housing, but in the, what I'll call, workforce housing. If you put the price up roughly 5%, you're basically forcing that market segment into lower-cost housing, older housing. That's going to have higher utility costs. That's going to have higher repair costs and a much less predictable need for cash, making it ultimately more vulnerable. And it's not just this one concept. It's kind of the death by a million mosquito bites. And so I would just ask council, as you talk this through, to think logically. Take a look at what developers have really done for this, have done for the city, and think about some of the unintended consequences of forcing the price of housing to go up roughly 5% to 10% on the front end without the use of metro district financing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mark Springfield.
Good evening. My name is Mark Springfield, 2009 Calico Court here in Longmont. Many of the comments tonight have been about residential metro districts. And that's really not the point of my discussion tonight. What I'm more interested in is making sure that the city maintains its flexibility in general with respect to special districts. And in that event, admittedly, I'm making my points perspectively to suggest some thoughts for further consideration in such debate.
Mr. Springfield, could you pull that microphone back straight? There we go.
It's hard to see. It's my concern that any ordinance which broadly bans all new special districts would be too indiscriminate in its implementation and would not serve the community well. An area that I am familiar with relates to our library. Presently, a city-paid feasibility study is underway exploring visions and organizational options available to the community towards creating a library system for the 21st century. One potential choice which may come from the study would be the creation of a library district, a special district, if you will, to facilitate the study's recommendations. My goal is to suggest to council that it's an attempt to craft an approach relative to special districts that it not create barriers to future desired possibilities for growth, such as a library system. Additionally, to do so could be a variance with state law. Specifically with respect to libraries, as an example, Colorado state law allows for the establishment of a library district by the citizens of the community if sufficient signatures to do so are obtained. In this case, it's my belief that the state wants to provide protections to the community to safeguard its interest in this area should other options be precluded to it. So in summary, respectfully, please consider these thoughts as the city goes forward with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jack Bestall?
Good evening. I'm Jack Bestall. My company, can you hear me?
There you go. Get in there.
I have to be right out there, okay? My company is Bestall Collaborative. We consult in development, planning, and real estate. P.O. Box 2223 Evergreen, Colorado. I currently represent owners that have several properties in the city of Longmont. We've been following your process over the last two to three years as the vision and the future vision for Longmont has been developed, including affordable housing, sustainability, a number of your concerns that have really been bundled into the vision. And the metro district approval in February was, we think, a very important ingredient. It's just one ingredient, but it's a very important tool to achieve some of the things that you're seeking. It's not the only tool. The developer generally always pays their way. They pay the money upfront for, if it's infrastructure, if it's public facilities, if it's open space, if it's land, if it's the residential buildings or the commercial, depending on what the project may be. We've been working on a neighborhood plan which we think conforms very closely to the future of Longmont's vision that you've been developing. It has a compact, smart development pattern, walkable neighborhood that includes child development center, a general store, community center, and open space and parks. Has a mix of residential types, over 12% affordable homes, a percentage of attainable homes to buyers at 80% AMI to up to 110%. And of course, we're looking at energy-efficient architecture and net-zero infrastructure. So this is a bundle of things that really is, I think, in the bull's eye of what this community has been talking about. And we'd like to implement that. Metro districts, we believe, have a benefit for this. It's a small percentage of the overall burden, the financial burden that it takes to develop a project like this. Perhaps maybe 25% to 35% of the public improvements would be of the total site development cost, for example, to put it in perspective. But what it does is it reduces the entry costs for buyers, for homeowners that would go into a community like that and creates more of a long-term cost which they would need to carry, whether it's upfront over a period of time. So development pays its way. I mentioned that. The entry costs, we've talked about. And it's only one tool. But I think the key to this is you'll hear the stories in the Post and so forth. And I've served on metro districts. I've also been a resident in a community that's had metro districts. And over 22 years, frankly, I've seen very good control by local communities, whether they be Frazier, Colorado, whether they be Vail, whether they be front-range communities. And it's really the community's burden. We see it as a collaboration, frankly, and a partnering to achieve community goals between the private and public sector. But most of all, I think we need certainty
Going to have to touch you up, Mr. Bestall.
in order for us to make decisions.
Thank you. All right. Cynthia Weiss, is that what it says? It's Weiss. Oh, hey, how are you?
It's close, but it's Gaethia Weiss.
Oh, Gaethia.
So my name is Gaethia Weiss. I live at 143 Cannon Mountain Drive.
Can you pull that microphone right up? There you go.
Okay. I am a retired analytical chemist with a background in industrial quality assurance. One of the tenets of QA is that problems are not addressed vindictively against individuals, but rather as evidence of systemic failures in processes, procedures, and training. And I hope the council acts accordingly. Pressures on our council are real. Our decisions have widespread impact. It's a classic example of thinking globally but acting locally. You're doing everything in the whole world, basically. And it's stressful. But you're going to have to figure out how to do it nicely and with high ethical standards. We're all in this community together. We need to act together, as we do with our public energy and internet services. Affordable housing is something that the entire community ought to be committed to and find ways for all of us to support. Metro districts divide our community into separate subunits. As future homeowners become aware that they are paying a tax not paid in other neighborhoods, they are likely to be resentful and less likely to approve new taxes that benefit all of us. They'll create it essentially as an end run around Tabor and to benefit development. Metro districts are likely to reinforce the anti-tax mindset that created Tabor in the first place. And then, on the other hand, we might just create elite little enclaves here and there of people who are acting entirely like they aren't part of the rest of the community. I think it's something that we should avoid. It was a mistake to enact. And now that we know more about it and are more knowledgeable, I think we should repeal it. And I think that the exposes in the Denver Post have a real impact. I mean, members of my family, they're looking for housing. I'm going, "Ooh, look for that first." You're going to hurt the very homeowners you're trying to help. They think they're buying a house at a certain price, and it turns out the overall running expenses are higher because of this weird tax they didn't know about. And it's just not the way we should proceed. We are so good, stellar, with the way we have other public actions, and we can do better here, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Gaethia. All right, Robert Noble.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name's Robert Noble. We have a facility at 1820 Industrial Circle here in Longmont. We purchased that manufacturing facility in late 2008. It was a pretty heavy industrial circuit board manufacturer at the time. 20 years prior to our purchase, it was a heavy industrial circuit board manufacturer. Since that time, we put in significant capital expenditures over the last 10, 11 years. We have a vacant manufacturing site, and we want to lease it to a company that does CO2 extraction of hemp to produce CBD oil. We directed that CO2 company to come talk to the city of Longmont to pull the proper permits, to get the proper authorization. And that company was told by the city that our property was rezoned in 2018, September 2018. We emailed Don Burchett, which is the head of the zoning and planning commission here in Longmont for a variance. Don informed me that that's not possible, that the only way that that is possible is if the council members here inform him, can direct him to change where a medium industrial use is allowed, or they can specify wherever it can be allowed inside the city limits. I ask for that council's guidance now, for that directive. This was a heavy industrial plant when we bought it. It seems unfair to me that after putting in significant capital over the last 10 years, that we can no longer use it for that. By the way, I'm a chemical engineer, and I've spent a good portion of my professional life doing extractions, heavy extractions, hydrocarbon extractions, ethanol extractions, all over the world. What is happening in this industry, which I think would be a very good thing for the city of Longmont to be involved with, is just spectacular. And it's not a dirty word. It's not marijuana. This is hemp, and it's CBD. As a chemical engineer, I extracted isoflavones, soy isoleate protein. As a chemical engineer, I extracted isoflavones, soy isolein protein, soy isolate protein, Taxol, a number of the drugs that have come to bear here in the pharmaceutical world had their beginnings in this area. So I asked the council to take a look at what's happened with the zoning in my particular area, and let us use that facility for what it was built for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ryan Sample.
Sorry, sometimes I don't finish the G's. So I'm Reagan Sample, Tiffany Place, Longmont, Colorado. Thank you, Mayor Bagley and council. I'm speaking to you tonight on a couple of different issues. First, Mayor Bagley, it's about the metro districts. I realize that many members of the council have probably already made up their decisions on this, and I also realize that many probably don't fully understand the metro districts. While watching the council meeting last week, I've heard the question many times, why the rush? Why the rush? Some members said we need to rush to provide builders and developers with certainty for their planning. Well, it so happens there was certainty, and bringing this up in a rush effort causes that uncertainty. Instead, I believe, and the understanding for the urgency is a rush, because some individuals, they may be concerned that they might not be here for long, or the people that are guiding them with their votes maybe are concerned this is their chance to get this passed the way they want it to be, and get it through while the opportunity exists. On this issue, it seems pretty silly to remove a tool out of a toolbox, especially when few people in council fully understand its effectiveness, the pros and cons. Since each application for a metro district is looked at individually and on a case-by-case basis, and the council can approve or decline an application, it does not seem necessary to completely remove it as a potential tool and neglect to acknowledge there are times when it is appropriate. There seems to be a failure in understanding about the metro tax districts and how they work, how it can help in growing, in a growing community, to spread to the people that are coming in and causing that growth, some of that expense, or the people that maybe want to purchase new properties or increased amenities in their neighborhoods, that they can pay for that infrastructure. It's also a tool that should remain in place because it helps to lower the cost of entry-level housing. To say that realtors just want to make a quick sale, maybe there are some, but in any industry, there's probably people that want to push the buck through. I know I spend tons of time going through to make sure people understand everything about expenses in any business that I've had to help people. It's sort of like saying, I don't know, I don't use a socket set. I don't understand how a socket set works. I think we should take socket sets out of every toolbox. Although there are times when a socket set makes sense, just like a metro tax district can be useful, effective, and appropriate. But like I said, I'm sure most all the minds in council are already made up, and Mayor Bagley, I'm certain that some council members have already received their marching orders, their talking points, their instructions on how to vote. Another point next, I want to congratulate Tim Ellis, my friend, for his last day filming for Channel 8, and I'm hoping he finds something very fun to do to replace your time on Tuesday nights. And other than that, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. I can't read the last name, but I think it's Linda. There's a lot of Ls and Hs. Pretty swooping letters.
Linda Schlocky, 2307 Sheremar Street here in Longmont. For many years, even before your time as Mayor, Mr. Bagley, I have been watching Joan Peck and Polly Christensen work very hard to make the city of Longmont an affordable, safe, and healthy place to live for all the people in Longmont, not just the wealthy, or the powerful, or the developers. And I really appreciate both of your good work. Mayor Bagley, there is many of us who voted for these two outstanding councilwomen that find your treatment of them unacceptable. They are just as important of a part of this council as you are. On another topic, when I went to Colorado Real Estate School to become a real estate agent, my instructor was not only a real estate agent, but he was also a real estate attorney. And he warned us to beware of special districts for homeowners and homebuyers because it could cause major financial problems for them. As we are talking about special tools, financial tools, it brings me back to a city council a few years ago where several people decided to mortgage several of our public buildings, including our public library, to help developers build the new mall. And that got off to a pretty scary, rocky start when Sports Authority pulled out and Whole Foods delayed, and the taxpayers had to jump in and keep the thing afloat. One more topic, please, consider making our city safer and finding a way to get assault weapons off of our streets. There are so many people displaying their guns, it's so hard for us to know if they're a good person or a bad person carrying a gun. It would be easier for our police officers to supervise, too. Just today, there was another active shooter in another community that hurt a police officer badly and injured many other people. If we could figure out a solution for this in our city, it would be much safer. Thank you very much.
Mr. and Mrs. Palmer. Ms. Palmer.
Eve Palmer, 2129 Squire Street, Longmont. I didn't have a prepared speech on the special districts. I heard about this just last night, and I read the article, one of the articles, and I could go through here and list various numbers regarding certain people who went into a house they could probably barely afford, assuming they'd finally gotten the American dream, this is it, we know what we're going to pay, only to be surprised by doubling, tripling, quadrupling of their taxes, their property taxes, over the course of just a few years. I brought this up with a coworker today, because I just found out about it, and she informed me that she lives in a home in Erie that's probably around value of about $400,000. She's in a special district. She pays $5,000 a year in taxes. That is half my mortgage. I live in a house in Longmont that was built in 1976. The arguments that, an argument was made tonight about newer homes being less cost, fewer surprises as far as repairs. I don't believe that's true. I hear too many people tell me about the one- or two-year warranty periods running out on their houses, on their brand-new houses, and being faced with extraordinary expenses. This is not going to help our citizens. People who can, need affordable housing do not need to be surprised by such expenses as these. This is far beyond what would be considered for affordable housing, to pay maybe $400, $500 additional a month just in these outrageous taxes. The people that have come tonight to talk about, the people with the developers who have come to talk about affordable housing and entry-level housing, maybe they can get into it, but they can't maintain it. That can only hurt our community when these people are forced to leave their homes, to sell their homes, possibly file bankruptcy in some cases, and lose everything that they've fought for. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strider Benston. As you're coming up, Strider, I tried to call you. I'm sorry about your brother. I didn't have your number, but...
Yeah, thank you. Strider Benston, 95117. Some of you know my brother died on Thanksgiving in Arkansas, and so that's part of what I've been dealing with for quite a long time. What's going on currently? I'm almost glad I wasn't here last week. I hear the incivility got quite extreme, and I haven't studied all the things, so don't have a hardcore position, except for the incivility. But one thing going on, special districts, some people talk about flexibility, and that can make sense if the whole public is actively involved in understanding what the particulars are. But special tax districts often work like, starting 50 years ago, industrial and opportunity zones. That's like the WTO, secret tax to the corporations that can rob countries of, you know, you're not allowed to have labor rights, or women's rights, or environmental rights, or anything like that. That kind of thing is what takes place often. I won't say all the time, maybe not even most of the time, but often in special districts where the public is not actively overseeing what takes place. So many pieces of what's going on right now. You know about the impeachment of El Presidente, but they only put two charges. So what happened to obstruction of justice and the 500 pages of proof of our president bowing down to Russia and to Putin and every dictator in the world? Bolsonaro, Kim, you know, Erdogan, Duterte, any right-wing dictator, he'll bow down and everything for him. Brazil is burning down because of the abrogation of human rights there. Australia's burning down right now because of 115-degree climate. Summer hadn't even started. We better pay attention. Hitler destroyed a democracy that had only lasted for 12 years. It's a little slower here. We've had one 240 years. It's in jeopardy now. And just a few days ago, one Republican out of the whole country, out of close, one Republican voted in favor of the Voting Rights Act. Only one.
Thanks, Strider.
Pay attention.
Thank you. All right, Jim Marshall.
My name's Jim Marshall, 9591 East Hidden Hill Lane, Montree, Colorado. We've been active up here with the city over the last 18 to 24 months discussing metro districts. There's a lot to say, and I won't get it all in in three minutes, so I'm going to try to be brief. Use of special districts was legislated by the state of Colorado back in the 1950s. I bet most of you didn't know that. The primary goal was to transfer the responsibility to construct, finance, and repay certain public improvements from municipal and county jurisdictions to the special districts that encompass the taxpayers that would actually benefit from the use of the facilities. Some of the more common special districts are the ones we know, school, fire, library, parks, and rec, and of course, that new four-letter word metropolitan districts. There are thousands of special districts that have been formed throughout the state of Colorado. The metro districts are very misunderstood, as we are understanding tonight. I've heard a lot about taxes, increasing taxes. The primary reason taxes have increased on homes in the last 10 years in Denver is not metro districts. Metro district mill levies are capped. Taxes are not capped. Property values have doubled in the metropolitan area in the last 10 years. Think about it. The recent attack on metro districts by certain naive and career-building-oriented journalists would have us believe that all metro districts are bad. This is just simply not the case. It's just another example of irresponsible journalism. Mr. Magoya spent eight months researching this, because it took him that long, to find the exceptions to the rule. Not unlike any legislative action in history, there will always be the occasional abuse of legislative actions. Metro districts, yes, some people have abused the system over the years. Very, very, very few, they are the exception. Over the past decade, due to rapid increase in land value and construction costs, every progressive jurisdiction has realized that in order to ensure the continued development of quality residential communities and ultimately retail tax growth, they can use the district service plan to place hard limits on things such as mill levies, debt limits, and developer reimbursements. You guys did this with the Meadowbrook Service Plan. That service plan is very conservative, and it will work. It will not fail. City council recently approved the service plan for Mountain View Metro District. I'm not going to go through that one. I've also been told recently there are pre-deposed proponents to metro districts that use the metro districts, that the use of metro district creates medium and long-term problems for both governing jurisdictions and taxpayers that reside in the district. I've yet to hear a factual example of what those problems really are. Contrary to some recently comments I've heard, virtually all metro district revenues, revenue used to repay district debt is generated through tax-deductible property tax. This should not be confused with the new limits on interest deductibility on large mortgages. Tonight, I have, I prepared a-
Gonna have to cut you off, but thank you.
If you could get that down in front of your mouth. How's that?
There we go.
Okay, I prepared a statement.
Actually, up a little bit more. Up a little bit. There we go.
I prepared a statement, and I took my notes instead of my prepared statement when I left the house. And I'm really glad I followed the gentleman that said the metro district, the poor metro districts are the exception rather than the rule. If this is the case, then why did the Colorado Board, I'm just getting argumentative, and I don't want to, why did the Board of, of the Colorado Board of Realtors find it necessary in the 80s to put in the standard residential contract in bold capital letters, which is shouting at the reader, beware of special tax districts? And it's section 8.4 of the standard real estate. It's just awful. We don't need, you know, we turned them down before, and I am just wondering, what is the underlying impetus to bring metro districts back in our community? They were first thought of to develop unincorporated areas. At last, I heard Longmont's an incorporated area, and we don't need to have a special tax district. We have development up the Gazooch in Longmont. We don't need to bring developers in. It's just ridiculous, and I wonder what the underlying idea was to allow metro districts in our city. It's just, when the rest of the state, the Front Range, is looking at them and saying, no, they're not good. Years ago, we said we didn't want them. Why now do we want them when we don't have to entice developers here? It just, I do not understand how the council voted to put them in. I just, it's beyond my ken. And I would like an explanation somehow why you decided they were necessary now, when development is at an all-time high. Thank you.
Ms. Hinton, you did a great job for not having your remarks. No, I'm being sincere. You did great. All right, Mr. Kevin Mulchain.
Mayor and city council, Kevin Mulchain, 5139 Old Ranch Drive. I moved to Longmont in 2018 from Niwan. I did, because I was so proud of the city. In 2018, we all came together because this city said we need more affordable housing as a mandate. Everybody understands just mandating and saying, build 12% of your houses permanently- Everybody understands just mandating and saying, "Build 12% of your houses permanently for the people at the lowest end of the spectrum." All that does is shift costs to the middle class and the working force. We came up, why I was so proud of the city is because we coalesced around a plan originally presented by LEDP in June of 2018. It had 10 items for discussion that wouldn't cost the city anything, but would allow us to implement the 12% requirements without impacting the middle class, the workforce housing. The proof is in the pudding. I'm very proud of the fact that we're bringing in a community, the first community to come out of this ordinance. We're going to bring in a village for homeless veterans, 26 of them. We're providing the roads, the infrastructure. It's the first in the nation that we know of where a homeless community, a community for the homeless, is built at the same time within a market-rate community. The Veterans Community Project had 700 applications from cities to be city number two. We're a city number two, Longmont. I'm very proud of that. It doesn't happen if your city manager doesn't get on a plane and go visit the people in Kansas City and convince the founders that Longmont can pull this off. It doesn't happen if you all didn't agree on a plan to bring affordable housing to Longmont. Now, we want to take, we call them tools in the toolbox, and I actually think I'm going to credit, and I could be wrong about this, Councilwoman Marsha Martin, who said, "It's a hammer. It's one of the tools in the toolbox. Sometimes you hit your thumb." 1,800 times in this state, that tool has been used. It's called a metro district. Yes, there was an article, there's been another couple of articles in the Denver Post. One of the things the Denver Post didn't mention is that the top 10 selling communities in the state of Colorado are all metro districts. Somebody's doing something right. But here's the other thing it didn't mention. It didn't mention one problem that isn't addressed in the Mountain Brook Service Plan. Whether it's capping taxes, capping what the developer gets reimbursed, capping interest rates, they're all capped in your service plan. The tool is a state statute. How you implement it is in the service plan. Everything is capped in that service plan. Disclosure, every home buyer has to get a written disclosure of what his taxes would be based upon the sale price of the house within the district and without the district. Number three, control. We presented a service plan that said, "Well, we're going to have several districts, and they're going to work together." Your city manager and his staff said, "No, you're going to have one district." Why? Because the residents get to move in and take control of that district on the day they move in.
Thank you, Mr. Mulchain.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to slaughter this one, but Alan, if you're here, I could use an assist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not sure if it's the handwriting or the pronunciation that you need help with.
It's handwriting.
Alan Pogue, 4725 South Monaco Street. I'd like to address a couple of things I've heard here tonight in the context of what you all are considering. My first point is to please be mindful that the hard work that you all did earlier this year to modify your existing ordinance, to allow the use of metropolitan districts to assist in financing residential projects, was always intended to be on a case-by-case basis for good cause shown. You've approved one service plan since that ordinance was adopted earlier this year. I would ask you to go back and look at much of the misinformation and distortion of facts that's been printed in the Denver Post recently, and look at what you all did in the service plan that you approved in October. You all approved a service plan that includes a $9 million cap on reimbursements to the developer when the projected costs of the improvement in that service plan are three times that amount. That's as conservative as anything I've ever seen a municipality look at in the context of a service plan approval. You did it right. You approved a mill levy cap of 50 mills, not 75, not 95, 50. Prescient you were, realizing that these are the concerns that people have expressed when they move into a home that's in a metropolitan district. But the single most important thing that you did, which was not specifically required as to form in your ordinance, you required a disclosure paper be given to prospective purchasers, and it be given to them prior to signing a sales contract, not boilerplate buried in section 8.4 of a standard real estate commission form, but a very simple one-page document that explains what the maximum tax liability for their home could be if the maximum mill levy were imposed by that district. It couldn't be more simple, and it couldn't be more straightforward. In the article that was printed on the online version, middle of last week, printed in the Sunday Paper, I understand, this weekend, the family from Johnstown admitted, "Yeah, we could have done a lot more homework before we bought our house." People that buy in Longmont, in Mountain Brook, are going to have their homework done for them because of what you all required when you approved that service plan. So rather than take that hammer that somebody in another jurisdiction may have hit their thumb with and throw it in the trash, I would encourage you to consider leaving what you have in place, appreciating that each and every service plan that's submitted requires the approval of a majority of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, David O'Leary.
David O'Leary, 1700 Broadway. With regard to metro districts, we represent developer that is trying to get a project done in the city of Longmont as well. I don't have more to add to some of the things that were said before. Just want to point out that the metro districts are...
Can you lift up your mic?
The metro districts are a tool. They're not the only tool in the toolbox in order to get things done, but the districts also are only designed for, and the taxes that are collected are paying for public improvements. They're for water, sewer, streets, roadways, and amenities that are coming into the project. So a lot of the metro districts and the parameters that you put in in the service plan that you recently approved provide those caps and those four corners of the box that you need from a city council provision to evaluate whether on a project-by-project basis, they can demonstrate financial feasibility and pay for the improvements that they're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, especially the new council members. I have not been in this chamber for about two years. Last time I was here, a charity I was involved with was being honored by the town, and I want to just update you. It was the Mambaza Foundation, and they were building schools in Africa, in Uganda. And since the last time we were here, this last year, we just sent over two classrooms at the St. Vrain Valley School District, helped us build with their Vo-Tec department, and they are now computer labs. And so that. I want to tell you why I'm here also. I got, I was at a holiday party on Friday night, and I ran into Marta Bromschweig, who was the old planning director of Longmont back in the 80s or 90s. Go back a long way, that's why I have gray hair. And she hugged me and begged me to get involved in Longmont, and she saw so much things that... She said, "David, you're a fixer, and there's a lot of things that need to be fixed there. You're solution-oriented." There was a gentleman, I didn't plan on coming here today until somebody sent me an email and said, "David, there's a meeting about special districts. Can you be there?" They didn't know what my position is, but I'm here. I've listened to this, and you guys have a problem. You have a lot of good people who are concerned about special districts, and you have council members that are concerned, but special districts also serve a purpose. The problem is, when they get abused, it's a bad thing. Bad developer, bad underwriting. Yes, bad developers. I am a developer. I developed half of Ken Pratt Boulevard, the shopping centers there. I did the shopping center on Hoover. I'm a commercial developer. I've never been involved in a commercial metro district. I take that back, I was. I sat on a board, I've sat on two boards of special districts, and I can just tell you, six years on one board and maybe two on another, and they were fabulous. And we, I, because I feel personally involved in a community, especially Longmont, I feel we sent out a newsletter every year, and we asked for feedback, how you think it's working. And I can tell you, we never had a bad response, always positive, thank you. And some of the things that people are concerned about today are the fixing of that amount and the disclosure factor. I will tell you, when I developed the King Super Center on 17th and Pace, I was so concerned that the neighbors who were building, who were buying homes in the area before this, I did the shopping center there, I was so concerned about it, I sat down with the national developer, John Lang, international developer, and I said, "Will you please have a separate forum showing that there is a shopping center going there?"
Going to have to cut you off, though, but thank you, Mr. Chucknova.
Mr. Mayor and council members, Steve Erickson. I'm a builder with Boulder Creek Neighborhoods. We're building in Blue Vista now, providing attainable workforce housing and 26 permanently affordable units with a partnership with Elevations Land Trust. And we're also building at Ardenio's site at 9th and Hoover. I encourage the council to weigh carefully the decision to do away with the tool that we're finding as a private builder is increasingly, you know, the make or break in looking at a new community and whether that community will pencil. The two projects that we're in the middle of now and will be wrapping up towards the end of next year in Longmont were legacy projects that came out of the downturn. So we, you know, we're able to acquire those properties at a substantially discounted price to what the going rate is today. In looking at new projects, we are in other communities that do have the tool of metro districts, and it's becoming increasingly apparent that the only way to make those projects work in a price point that we feel comfortable with, not having to go too high in price point, is having a metro district that allows that 5% to 10% savings in the entry-level price for the home buyers that we target, which are lifestyleers and increasingly now the empty nesters and sometimes first-time home buyers, when it's our We Cottage that we have at Blue Vista. So I'm not going to reiterate the many other points that I think were well-made by other presenters here, you know, particularly Kevin Mulchain with the one test that you've had of the toolset, but you have a lot of power in your service plan to limit the mill levy, to limit the recoveries, to require the disclosures so that people are not surprised by the community that they're buying into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Thompson, 1616 Sumner Street. As I understand it, there are going to be representatives, or there are representatives here tonight from the Northern Water Conservation District to answer questions about the Windy Gap firming project, the update that's on the agenda for tonight. Is that right? Back on August 25th, the Sunday edition of the Denver Post, there was a banner headline, the entire Denver Post, front page of the Denver Post, above the fold, huge letters, beautiful picture of the Colorado River. It was this, it said, "West Wrestles With Colorado River Grand Bargain As Changing Climate Depletes Water Governed By 1922 Compact. California's Power To Call For Water Threatens Denver." Denver's water manager, the manager of Denver Water, who's probably the most powerful person in the water area in Colorado, Jim Lockheed, said, "Unless we have this grand bargain, Denver would..." He said, "We would stand to lose half our water supplies for 1.4 million people." That means all of their Colorado River water rights and infrastructure would be rendered worthless without this grand bargain. And what this article explained is that the grand bargain is basically not a bargain at all. It is just a fairy tale hope that somehow the lower basin states and the Colorado River Compact will give up their rights, entirely give up their rights to water. And so what this water, what this article makes clear is that there is a substantial probability that there's going to be a call on the Colorado River Compact, and you all have to know by now, it's been, you've been told this, that when this call happens, that the Windy Gap project, both the firming project and the original project, will be rendered worthless. The threat to us is at least 1,000 times higher than the threat to Denver and Denver Water. This has been explained to you. So this is a law school textbook case of fraud, that these Northern Water people are here once again to try to sell you, get you to invest more money in this Windy Gap firming project, when they know there is this substantial risk that the project will fail, and they aren't saying anything about it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Going to have to cut you off, but thank you. All right, Alyssa Pfeifer? Pfeffer? St. Vrain Shelter? All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and wrap up. First call, actually only call publicly invited to be heard tonight. You doing okay? Can we do one more? All right, let's go ahead. Anybody opposed to a quick break? All right, let's go ahead and break. All right, let's go ahead and break. All right, let's start making our way back to our seats. All right, let's go ahead and get started again. Harold, why don't you go ahead and kick us off with 5A review of community ranger program?
I'm gonna kick that off. I'm also gonna say because of timing with Northern and needing to catch some airplanes, we're gonna need to push that, we're gonna need to pull that one from the agenda. Item C on the Windy Gap firming, we'll bring that back next week as an update, and then we're gonna pull item E because of timing on some other issues that need to come forward. So, review of community ranger program, unless there's any questions from council on the Windy Gap and the other.
Don't have any.
Okay. David?
Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
I'm sorry, I would like some more information on that about the Colorado Compact, because I've heard about that for a long, long time, and I would like people who really understand this to speak on it a little more.
So what we'll do is have Ken Hughes and Dale work with them, so when they come back, they can go into that in more detail.
Right, okay, thank you.
And Michelle, not to make your job even more difficult, and you don't have to do it right now, but council member Christensen was coming up as council member Peck. And council member Peck used to sit in that seat, just on my little, on the little, so I, yeah, I can do it by sight, but it'd be, all right, cool. You don't have to do it now, just later, just a heads up. All right. Bell?
Mayor, council members, David Bell, Director of Parks and Natural Resources. I'm here with Kimberly McKee, the Executive Director of LDDA, and we're gonna give you a update on the community ranger program. And I'm going ahead and just give a little bit of background before we jump right into the slides. Even though it's Kimberly and myself that are here talking about this, this really was a collaborative effort that came out of our swaps program, our safe and welcoming communities, working with community services, public safety, Harold's office as well, and the ways that we look at and address homeless in our community, how we provide services, how we hold people accountable to the rules and regs that we have. And as we started looking at how we do that and provide a consistent message to people through our community, we recognized that we had rangers out in our parks already talking to people, reminding of our rules and regs, providing life-saving services, being able to educate people, and we thought there was opportunity to provide that service in the downtown area as well. So this will be the background. So this really is a very collaborative process that brought us to this point. So after we came up with this idea through our group work, we did bring it to council, and council then gave us direction to take this project forward, and they actually had a couple of other items that came forward through the downtown area, and that was the smoke free campus and approving public land ordinances in the breezeways. So we then had direction from council to go ahead and move forward and bring rangers, community rangers, out into our downtown areas as they're patrolling through our parks, greenways, and open space areas. So we did get started a little bit late on this program, and that's one thing, is we started looking at data a little bit later. We didn't really get our rangers hired until early July, and when we, thank you very much, Councilmember Martin. As we, as we started the hiring process, our goal was really to hire three community rangers. One of those would be a post-certified officer that could do more of the law enforcement. Looking at the hiring process and the application process, we didn't get a chance to do that, so we ended up just with two rangers this year. So again, I'm gonna kind of refer back to the fact that we knew this was an experiment going into it. We wanted to get it off the ground and see how we could start implementing this and then start really working how we fine tune it. After we hired them on, we had to do training and orientation. We got them hired in and out on the streets about August. We still didn't get all the training we needed to get them to write tickets beyond parking tickets. So we just had some gaps in that area, too. So we can talk about a little bit more as we go forward. Data collection then was something that, again, we got very fortunate, the fact that our business services group and Public Works National Resources had some very good people out there that could develop a data collection system, allowed us to really keep track of data as we move forward through this. However, again, when I built the program for the rangers before, that was outside consultant, took about a year, we did this pretty quickly, and I think we have a good system, but again, it has some gaps in it that we identified, which is, again, I think, an outcome of this program. As council asked about this program going into, one of the big questions was, we're funding it so these rangers could move through different property types and different funding types. Downtown, parks, open space, and greenways required different funds. We had to make really, really clear that we were not using open space funds or park funds or the LDDA funds in areas that weren't appropriate. So that tracking system, the data collection was able to do that. The whole program costs a little over $18,000. LDDA paid a little over $5,000, and the remainder was really paid by the parks and open space programs that allow for the patrols on the, on the greenways and stuff, and that is proportional to the time they spent in those areas. Another piece that we really wanted to make sure we did is make sure these rangers were tied into our resources in the community, so they could reach out to people that were in need, provide those, those services. And the first responder meeting is a monthly meeting, I believe, that happens on a Monday, and that really is our law enforcement officers, that's our HOPE, our, our centers, LDDA, talking about people in the community that need help, need resources, and how we address that. So they were tied in very closely to that program as well, as well as neighborhood meetings, neighborhood captain meetings as well. So we really tried to, to kind of embed them and engage them in the community. And again, they were managed by the lead ranger out at Union Reservoir, so it really was a holistic look. It wasn't just targeted at downtown. This map really shows just patrol incidents here. So as you're looking at this, this is where the rangers spent their time. Again, this data collection system allows us to hover and do some live actions, action data collection by hovering over these dots, but this is kind of a static piece we put up there, just so you can kind of see that we went from Union Reservoir, Greenways, the downtown area, up to Macintosh Lake. So it really was a pretty wide variety of areas that the rangers covered this summer. And this graph does break that down to kind of let us show that really one of the things that we were kind of target is with the funding, that we were trying to spend about 25% of the time down in the downtown area. Funding was there that we could do a little bit more, so about 31% of the time was spent down in the downtown area. The rest really was spent on the parks, open space, and greenways. So another component of that is we really could start breaking down not only where they're patrolling and the time they spent there and the dollars that were being spent, but the kind of actions they were having. And again, as we look at this, I did mention the fact that we did not get to the point where we had the, these rangers to the point where they could write citations other than the parking tickets. But as you, as you look at this, they managed most of this through voluntary compliance. As they talked to people, giving warnings, giving education, they were able to gain that, that compliance throughout the system. So we feel that we will get on this earlier this coming year, that we can get that training in place, and we have that floor toolbox of options that rangers have. But this past year, it really was an option that we, I mean, not an option, but a ability to solve those problems with just the written, or the warnings and the education. So as, as we, we looked at kind of where they spent their time, one of the things that we wanted to talk about was the fact that LDDA was not the area they were just really focused on, but we knew this sort of consistent message we're trying to send throughout the city, people moved around. The people we were contacting along the greenways and in the parks and the downtown area, people that we wanted to make sure we could reach out to and have that message and the services provided where they're at. So as you'll see from Kimberly's presentation, they may not always be in the same area, but we want to be able to reach out to them wherever they're at. And this is a problem that does not go away, is one that we're gonna have to continue to work on. So today, I did get a call to Roosevelt, to the, to the Stone Shelter out there, which has been an area where people are starting to show up and spend time to get out of the weather. As I went out there, I made contact with these individuals. I asked them if they needed a place to go that was warm. One said she had a case manager, the other two said they did not want to engage with that, they didn't want to wait in lines, and they were quite all right hanging out in the Stone Shelter. And again, there's that, that balance we have to make and how we make our parks safe for my staff, for the public, and make sure our resources are taken care of, but also the people out there being taken care of appropriately, too. So from my point of view, as far as the ranger program and how we engage these rangers out in the parks, open space, and greenways, I think it had a strong benefit, had those extra eyes and ears, but I know we have some steps to make to move forward. And again, this is a ongoing issue that we're gonna be managing for a while.
So as you all know, we wanted to partner in this program because it's very important to us to keep downtown clean, safe, and vibrant, and that's always what we're looking at. Having that extra set of eyes and ears around downtown, helping identify things, making contacts with people, is very important, as well as that consistent messaging. Having a familiar face in the community that the rangers were able to build at the time they were here was really important. It was important to us that everyone be treated with dignity and respect, and that we were able to give people information, assistance, and education. And it's also very important that we're able to share the information that rangers are seeing amongst departments and other organizations. And so that is really a part of that eyes and ears, which I think is so important. When we look at the ranger incidents in the LDDA, I think, again, those observations were key. The rangers would come in and check in quite a bit with us and let us know what they were seeing. There were significant issues of bad behaviors and things like that in 2018, and those patterns did not continue in 2019. We didn't see them before the rangers and we didn't see them after. What that did was made the rangers able to address safety concerns that were being, happening downtown that didn't involve community members experiencing homelessness. The highest thing that we saw in downtown was non-dismounting bicycles, and that is something that is a real safety concern that we're hearing over and over for businesses. They saw 82 people not volunteer to dismount their bikes even after being asked in our dismount zone, but 17 did, so we'd like to thank all of them. And so they were really working to educate the community. One of the other things with the smoking ordinance is they were able to do lots of education and voluntary compliance of letting people know. People were, were kind of happy to comply with that, even if they were able to write citations, they wouldn't have, nor did they feel like they would have had to. What people did not appreciate was our education cards about resources of how you stop smoking, so maybe we won't give those any longer, but that was the biggest complaint that we were seeing there. And again, so none of those citations or warnings were given, nor did we think they were warranted. So what did we learn in this experiment? That there was a lot of training and integration with PD, and that should start earlier and be more coordinated at the forefront. They had a great working relationship with David Kennedy and Sarah Arnn, if you know them, they are part of our first responders. They worked very closely. But again, they never were able to issue citations. In the future, if this program continues, the PD felt that if they went to more briefings and were a little bit more integrated into some of that, as well as some data sharing, that it would be more beneficial. We did speak to both Andy and Joseph from HOPE. They said that they never received any complaints from any of their clients regarding rangers or treatment or anything that was happening. After discussion with HOPE, we have decided that if we do move forward, we would love for the case manager and the rangers to walk together a few days a month to make sure that there is trust established and that the clients and, and folks experiencing homeless know that these folks are working together, and so they're able to interact with the rangers as well as folks with HOPE, and they could make those connections. So we feel like that would be much stronger in the future. When we talk to our downtown block captains and business owners, in the future, one of the things that we would see is hopefully rangers doing a few more business contacts, walking in, talking to business owners. With the vast amount of area and the steep learning curve that we had in this year, that was something that we thought could be built on later, as opposed to us seeing that this year. And when we haven't seen any negative consequences from businesses or hear any negative feedback. And when we talk about other city staff, particularly the campus supervisors, felt that this was a very positive relationship. They liked having the eyes and ears out on the street when they were in the facilities and they were able to work closely together. Again, it allows for that consistent messaging, which we feel is so important. I think the rangers did a good job, and we did a good job with the tracking system. I'd like to thank David for all of his leadership in doing that together. We know that that data collection needs to be honed in, it needs to be better. We've been talking to other departments as well that collect data to talk about how we can work together and make sure that we have a very integrated and robust system. So I think to, to sum it up, I think staff feels like this was a very good start to this experiment. We did learn ways to improve upon it. It was a limited sample size, and so the data is not super robust, but we tracked what we could in the time. There's more to gather, but we do feel it's worthwhile to continue. Thank you very much.
Specifically on the data collection piece, I know there were a couple of motions that...
Specifically on the data collection piece, I know there were a couple of motions last week talking about where we are in the broader conversation, and what we're really finding is, we had a group work on the Safe Lock conversation that council wanted us to bring back. One of the things that we're finding, and specifically in terms of the data collection, is the, for lack of a better word, the app we're using has a lot of variability in how you can put the information in, which makes it very hard to then start crossing the data sets and, and understanding what's really going on. And so we've actually started work with Ellie Berto, Matt Lee, and Amy Shriver to sort of refine that more, so that it can be more focused and we actually know the inputs are consistent from department to department, so we can do a better data evaluation to look at this over time.
Harold, if I, if I could, Mayor Council, if I could tell one anecdotal story that I think just kind of, kind of helps with this as well. One of the things is we're at the first responders meetings, talking to Hope. The Rangers, because of that kind of consistently being out in all those different areas, Hope had a client that they had kind of fallen off the radar, that they were looking for, that had qualified for housing, and they couldn't find that individual. The Rangers knew where that person was at, they were able to make that contact, meet, hook them up with Hope, and then get them back into the system that way. So I think having that, that partnership really has some positive outcomes. And for me personally, going out there today to deal with people at the, the shelter, is easy for me to pick up the phone and give Andy a call and say, this is the situation I have right now. So I think it's built some pretty strong bridges.
All right, that's it for the presentation? Okay, Councilmember... Okay, Councilmember, it says, this is Councilmember Peck. All right, so Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, I've spent the day struggling with my own trade-out, and so I understand the problems with technology. So when this was first presented, I was frankly not for it, because number one, I think that on the face of it, giving tickets to people who are smoking outside is, does not make sense. And secondly, I felt like it was going to be used as a way to harass homeless people. But I have completely changed my mind. I think this is a very good system, and while it's just new, we have now got some, some data that we can use, and we have a lot of coordinated, uh, interaction between various city, uh, groups. And I think this is really excellent. I, I know that anything that involves Officers David Kennedy and Sarah Arndt is a very good, because they are both very smart, they have a good sense of humor, and they really have a heart for anybody, whether they're dressed in Armani or rags. So I, I'm very enthused about this, uh, relationship between the police department and the Rangers and Hope, and I like the story you gave us. And I do, the one thing I would, I don't know if I can make a motion, but I would like to motion, last time we discussed this, I tried to make a motion that we make dismounting from, I think I said third to sixth, but I would say first to sixth, not an option, that we make it a legal thing, that people do this. And I would move that, because it continues to be a very big danger. A guy had died who was on his bicycle just the week before that. Small children, dogs, the elderly who have walkers or canes, people like me who are mostly deaf, nobody on the stra... It's called a sidewalk for a reason, so we should not have people with scooters, skateboards, or bicycles riding those things from First to Sixth Avenue on Main. And I would move that we make that dismount mandatory. Do I have a second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. However, what we're talking about is changing ordinances.
Yes.
So we need a first and second ordinance. So I think it would probably be most appropriate...
Of course.
If you'd, you'd accept a friendly amendment, which would be to direct staff...
Yes.
To put this on a future schedule...
Yes.
That we could then...
Yes.
Yes. So...
Okay.
Is anyone opposed to this?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so by consensus, the motion passes unanimously because it's consensus. So, thank you. Anything else? All right, Dr. Waters.
What? Oh. Somehow we went back to the old, somehow we reverted, so that's all right. Oh, watch this. Councilmember Idalgo Ferring.
Um, so, okay. So as I was looking at your recommendations, and as well as, so I do agree with the dismounting piece, and, where is it at? Oh, in the reported, the incidents, incidences, and some of the things that were, talked about were extending training. Have, has any of the Rangers been trained on Safe Talk, assist, or mental health first aid in dealing with the public?
Are you in the queue?
Yeah, I don't know who to...
Okay, we're back, yep.
Mayor, Councilmember Idalgo Ferring. We did try putting the Rangers into programs, they're working with Hope and our center to get some of those trains, working with David and Sarah. I couldn't tell you the specific names of the, the trains we put them through. We will be looking at doing some more of that next year with specific checklist for the, the type of training, but that was a criteria for us, is try to make sure they're prepared with those organizations, provided that sort of opportunity to, to get that training. So I, I think it was covered in a broad sense, but the, the specific topics you, or the specific trainings you mentioned, I'm sure they did. They did verbal judo, they did a couple of other trainings as well, too. One of our Rangers also has a background in, in mental health, practicing and worked at a facility, so I think it was nice having them partner together so they could share that as well.
So, so really, it's having that training around, when, working with the public, knowing how to interact with people in crisis, and to not agitate, so...
So the wonderful thing I mentioned, this is a collaborative effort?
Yes.
I have one of the other collaborators here.
Mayor and, and councilmembers, so, so just to add to that, we do, here with the City of Longmont and through our City of Longmont University Training Program, so we do offer mental health first aid, Safe Talk, and we continue to offer that to our city employees, and we'll do that into next year. So we'll make sure that we hook up with David Bell and the Rangers and see if we can get them involved in, in training. And then we also have something that is, that we are offering on December, December seventeenth, we're doing a, a half-day session with Ryan Dowd, who is head of the, one of the largest homeless shelters in Chicago, and he's coming here to Longmont to do some compassionate, oh, I don't remember where there is, compassionate intervention, training with, with all city employees. So we'll, we'll continue to offer that training to all of our staff.
Okay, so then, in one of the things where you guys wanted to extend, and maybe I'm directing the question to the other, to extend training, so some of those, expanding of the training would include those pieces, as well as implicit bias? So what are some, I mean, I would recommend if you're working with the public, to have those, that type of training in place, so when you're dealing with people of different ethnicities, different backgrounds, different walks of life, that, that people who are interacting at, at that level would, would know how to appropriate, appropriately interact.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So generally, when we talk about this, and we had our, the code that we have for city facilities, we actually went through with some basic training, everyone went through, and then we had different tiers. That is an important concept for us, not only for folks that are in these types of positions, but folks that are in any position within the organization, so they can have conversations with individuals. We've also started equity and inclusion training, which touches on the implicit bias. We brought my, my director's team, and then an equal group representative of the organization. We're also going to work with the employee advisory group and start building that into a much broader organizational strategy that we're going to use. That's just part of our more holistic component, of which we will make sure that certain components and individuals are brought in. I think when we have more time, and they're coming on, it'll, we can check all of those boxes, but I did want to state, this is something that for me, and, and for my leadership team, that's really important for the entire organization.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Can you raise your hand if you're in the queue? All right. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. We've talked about what the nature of a pilot program is in this council several times, and it strikes me that because we had sort of an abbreviated season here, and I, I really like the data gathering that's been done, and I'm wondering if we don't have an opportunity now to sort of extend, extend the pilot concept into the upcoming season, and do some more work around setting goals, now that we have a, a data set that tells us what's going on and with what frequency. So one thing I would like to see as the plans progress into next spring for this program is that some goals get developed out of the data for, you know, reduction of, of the highest, highest incidences of, of offenses, Councilmember Christensen's concept of maybe making the dismount request more enforceable. You know, I'm sure that, that when you folks put your heads together, you will come up with some really nice goals, now that you've got some really nice data. So I'm not sure we need a motion on that. I think that just making the suggestion is probably enough. If you guys would like a motion, I'd be happy to introduce one. To, to have the, have the Ranger program develop some goals out of the new data collection for, for the next season, so that we can not only measure the kinds of incidences that we're seeing, but the effectiveness of the program in, in terms of, of reducing the proportions of, of the incidents that we're seeing, and the effectiveness of the interventions. Do I have a second, if, you know, if it's going to be a motion? No?
Okay, no, no, but the, well, I mean, no, there's no second, and the other thing is, the queue just died on me. So raise your hands again. All right, get back in the queue if you, if you are in the queue. Marcia, or, sorry, Councilmember Martin, you still have the floor?
Okay, um, if, okay, you would support that?
Well, Councilmember Martin? Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't have a second.
Can I, yeah.
So sorry.
All right, well, I guess I don't have a second then.
All right. It's gone again. Let's go with Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilwoman Martin's suggestion, but I think it's a bit early for that. And the reason, the reason that I even asked for this this week is because I noticed that this past year, we have not had as many homeless people coming up to council for the first time since I've been here. So I wanted to see comparative data from last year and this year. I, I don't, for me, I don't think that I want to continue a pilot program unless the comparative data makes sense that we are actually moving in the right direction with the right program. So that's why I'm waiting for, I, I was very happy to see that only two people were sleeping in the park, as compared to the people that came before council last year and the year before complaining about that. And I understand this is a very short clip of time, it isn't a year. So before we move any further on extending a pilot program or getting data, I would like to see the full season, the full year, and compare it to previous years, to see how much difference it made on, on a lot of these issues. Does that, that make sense, Councilwoman, Councilwoman?
We're going to have somebody, we're going to have, I mean, there's a lot of people in the queue, and so, yeah. All right, Councilmember Christensen?
I think that we all think this is a good pilot program. I think it's a, I think it's terrific, and that's coming from somebody who didn't think it was going to be a good idea. There's one thing I would like to bring up, that the library, which isn't technically part of downtown, but it's in the downtown district, and the library has been very heavily impacted, and by people who are homeless. And I would like to get some idea, it mentions here that, I'd like to get some idea of how that's going. It mentions here that Rangers had a great relationship with library staff, worked with memorial building staff in the absence of a campus supervisor. So I would like to be sure that our library is being taken care of, because it's really like the jewel of the city, and I, I want us to continue to help them deal with the problems that they've been impacted by.
If I can answer that question, as you know, we had some campus supervisors, and because they were term limited, the individual that was in the position just, it went vacant for a while. We immediately started seeing a repeat of the challenges that folks were having in the library. We brought that as part of the budget process for next year, and that's a position that will be funded ongoing, based on the conversations that we have with council during the budget
All right, Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. I want to reinforce how important that is, because it is something we talk about frequently at the library board meetings, and that is a real issue. I, I might have, I might have seconded your motion, Councilmember Martin, but I wanted to, I wanted to think about it a little bit differently together, maybe. Kimberly used the word experiment, experimental program, spot on. From my perspective, if it were, just to you, if it were a pilot program, I would have expected to see this far more well-defined with, with baseline data and specific performance targets, in the presentation of data relative to those targets, to see whether or not we have a well-defined program, proj- project that we're piloting that's accomplishing its purpose. And what do we want to learn from that? What are the adaptations? Do you want to think about going to scale? You want to resource it differently? Those kinds of things that you might learn around a pilot. If you're in, I would think of this as R and D, right, which is a form of experimentation, in that everything I heard David say, you got started late, you're learning your way forward in terms of what the training is, what do you add, what do you subtract to make certain people have the knowledge base, or the background they need to do what we've asked them to do, are all part of development efforts, right? Those aren't well-defined yet. So for whatever it's worth, from my perspective, you didn't bring us a pilot program, you brought us an R and D effort, you've, you're iterating your way forward with that R and D effort. I think you've learned a lot, but I would reinforce, the reason I didn't second the motion for goals, is that I think what we, what I'd like to see in the next iteration of this R and D effort, are baseline, more specific performance targets, right, based on what you've learned. And I see the goal statements that are here, they're kind of a mix of activities and aspirations, which is a good start, but they ought, if they're goals, they ought to lend, maybe be broader, but they ought to lend themselves two measurable objectives, right? And, and you, and you're going to want to refine those as you go forward as well, but you ought to be able, especially if we give the green light to this, which I think we should, in 2020, you have a head start now on what the, what the baseline data are, based on that experience, what you'd expect to see the effects to be, and, and now you may have then, a pretty well-defined pilot that you want to test in a couple of different ways. Thanks. So I don't know where you want to go with that, but that for me, are goal statements that would be more precise performance targets that we're looking at. I'd ask one more thing. When we, when we talked about this initially, one of my concerns was, who would provide oversight, right? You're the developer and the implementer, hard to do your own oversight. So the group, there was an interdisciplinary group, including Hope and others, that you're, that you're working with, and I, and I see the reference in your report that you didn't have complaints from them. It's probably more positive, that's probably not the most positive way to state it, kind of the, the, that there were no negatives, I'm certain there were more positives. But it would be helpful for me, if we're going to do this again, as part of that, the next iteration of this R and D effort, would be to see a more, more explicit feedback from your oversight group. Who's overseeing the implementation of this effort? oversight group, who's overseeing the implementation of this effort, and what have they shared with you from their observations, and have that be part of what you report to us the next iteration of reports, if that's next fall or next December.
All right. Briefly, councilmember Martin.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think among the four of us who've spoken on this, we're having a problem in that we essentially agree, but we don't recognize each other's language. And especially about the questions that councilmember Peck raised, I probably should know this and didn't pay enough attention to the council communication, but I think what we need to know is at what point will this program be approved or not continued? And do we need to put some definition around the continuation? I'm not hearing anybody saying it shouldn't be continued. It looks like we have some positive results, but it would be good at this point to turn it from, as Dr. Waters said, an R and D project into a pilot project. And so, the next time this comes before us, and I don't want that to be next August, right, we should have, based on the limited metrics that we have now, some firmer goals. I can think of one, you know, that we should accomplish better engagement with the merchants of downtown and perhaps set some pre-metrics around that, you know, that we have a goal of how many engagements, and maybe have an evaluation form that the merchants can fill out so that they can tell us whether they're seeing an improvement because the Rangers are present. That's the kind of thing that I want, I was trying to express, but what I feel like we don't know is when we make the decision to go forward and what we would, when we would see a plan for going forward from the partners in this collaboration. So, if that could be clarified, we might all find it easier to get on the same page.
So, I think in talking to David, we recognize many of the same issues. If you remember when I said that the method of data collection was problematic based on how it was, how they collected, how we collected, and so, we're just now really establishing baselines of data based on this, and it needs to be clean data because it's the other piece that I'm seeing as I look holistically. And so, I think that's something that we want to do is then to take this information and go and start refining it and setting some of those objectives. And then, I would want to bring it back to you all in the early spring, early enough so we can get started and get everyone trained, so we could get a full season of this, if that's council's desire and what you all want to see. Or we can, as staff, build all of those components, set those objectives, move forward, and then provide you an update periodically as we're moving through the season.
Do you need our direction now to do that in the early spring, or is that just going to happen?
It's budgeted, so, I mean, we can, we can just move through that, but...
All right. I think you've probably heard an essential consensus here.
I was just going to suggest that this came forward to us as a request by LDDA wanting to do this. And so, what I would suggest is staff and LDDA regroup, and if you want to continue the program, bring us an option, and we might do a pilot program. But I think if we just push it on to LDDA, and you can work with David Bell, and bring something back that may or may not benefit you, and we'll just take it from there.
What I would say, and to be careful in terminology on this one...
All right. Fix my terminology, please.
Well, so, we're seeing this as an experiment. We may have to go in through another round of this, but one that's more refined so that we could then have a better sense to then move into what you would traditionally call a pilot.
My point was, just say, you guys bring us what you suggest, and then we'll go from there.
I just want to make sure we're clear on terminology in terms of how we see this.
Just bring it back at some point. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I think we use different terms. I don't use corporate speak. I just, you can say it's R and D, you can say it's a pilot program. I think what you're doing is very good. I support it, and I'd like to see more of it. I think the people in charge of this, Kimberly McKee, David, and the police department, they're all excellent. I think that this is a very good example of what, the benefits that can be gained when different departments work together, and I think it's a very positive start. So, I'd like to see it continue.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, I've got a question for council. It's not normal, but I'm not going to do it. I will ask what you guys want to do. There is a woman that was on the First Call Public Invited to Be Heard, and her name is Alyssa Pfeifer, and her address is listed as the St. Brain Shelter Safe House. She had to, hold on one second, we don't know yet. So, and I don't know what she's going to say, don't know what she's going to talk on. It was brought to my attention that when her name was called, she had to step out for, she was required to step out to use the restroom and missed her chance to speak. She asks that she get that chance to speak. So, does anyone, I'm not going, does anyone object? All right. So, we're going to go ahead and deviate from the agenda, and we're going to reopen First Call Public Invited to Be Heard to give the opportunity to Alyssa Pfeifer to speak. You'll have three minutes, at which point, I'll cut you off, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. So, my name is Alyssa Pfeifer. My address isn't really disclosed because it's a safe place, a domestic violence shelter of St. Brain. I was a victim of domestic violence just a few weeks ago, and the staff there are advocates. However, they have not been our advocates. There is a lot of suffering going on at that shelter, a lot of bullying, being threatened, pressure, and the power and control wheel that they teach is actually hypocrisy there. I have spoken with the supervisors, I can name them later or give you the names of them. I've spoken with the executive director, and it seems like this is a gangrene that has spread through all levels of staff. So, I didn't know what else to do except to call council, the council today, the city council today, and spoke with your office manager, and she said, hey, there is a council meeting tonight, perhaps you can speak. So, here I am, I just found out that it's six o'clock today and made my way over here. I'm here to speak, just, not just for myself, but for the other women that are going through this. And also, there's not just children at this, there's not just women at this shelter, there are children, there's several children, there's little girls and little boys. And the example us mothers set where we're being intimidated, which is where we come from, from domestic violence, where our partners have controlled us and forced us to just comply just so that we have a place to live. We are all trying to work together as sisters in a way to not return to our abuser, which is a very high percentage of women in domestic violence return to their abusers. This is one reason why, because when you go to a shelter, I've found, they feel that they're in control. I thought they were supposed, when I was presented to this with the Broomfield Police in good faith, spoke with them, I thought I would be safe there, but mentally and emotionally, I'm not safe there. I had to call the police today to help mediate a situation with the manager there because she was harassing me so badly. I have PTSD, anxiety, I've been threatened to be killed and almost killed three times. This type of violence, even if it's not physical, is very detrimental to my improvement. I am trying to, I have a job, I'm working, I'm trying to get on my feet so I don't have to be reliant on my abuser. So, really what I'm here for is just to ask for help. I don't know how that help comes. You are the wise ones and can find a way to help, but maybe some type of investigation needs to be done, a retraining of this system, because it is revictimizing.
All right. Thank you. If you could just leave your contact information with that gentleman right there, Harold Dominguez, we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, council. All right. We doing okay? All right. So, let's go ahead and move into 5B, a discussion regarding the Longmont Municipal Code on Special Districts Policies and Procedures. You've given a presentation previously. Do we have that presentation again? That's all right. Are we going to have a presentation, staff, or we're just going to have a discussion?
No. Based on the conversation, I indicated last time we were going to provide you with the background, and you all were going to have a conversation. Staff is here to answer any questions.
But you have no presentation?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So, let's go ahead with Mayor Protem, Aaron Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. First of all, I would like to thank everybody that's here in the audience tonight that spoke passionately on both sides of the issue. I think generally speaking, the council has made determinations personally, one way or another, and that it's unlikely that hearts and minds are going to be changed, especially through a debate through the constraintments, the constraining rules of Robert's Rules of I do believe this is a conversation that needs to be had amongst council. And so, I would like to move to actually table this or continue this agenda item to the next available meeting that has time for a pre-session before it, which I believe is January 7th, has time for a pre-session before that's not already scheduled. On the 17th, we have a pre-scheduled pre-session meeting with boards and commission interviews. Then, there is two weeks off for the holiday break, and January 7th would be our next city council meeting. Because I believe it's pertinent that the council have the opportunity to discuss this matter without the constraints of Robert's Rules of Order. Because at this time, I do not believe that this discussion is in any way going to be productive. It's only going to be divisive likely and come down to, again, a one-vote majority one way or another that does not accurately allow us to debate the merits, because I'm sure there are councilmembers on both sides of the issue that have a litany of either arguments for or against the issue. And so, that's my proposal, that's my motion, and whether I have a second or not, I don't know.
All right. There's a motion that we table this till January 7th, 2019, at which point or at which time we would reconvene in a pre-session in order to have a discussion more free from Robert's Rules of Order. So, we would be able to go through potential litnes of pros and cons from individual council members. And that was made by Mayor Protem Rodriguez, and it was seconded by councilmember Martin. And I don't have, can I, Sebastian, could I get the, Ms. Sebastian? That's all right? So, I know you were in the queue, councilmember Christensen? Yeah, sure.
Well, my question is that it's my understanding that we still conduct pre-sessions with Robert's Rules of Order. Is that not true?
Yeah, yeah, it is true, but, but, the format here, you know, just, I mean, the format here, and what is it, the thing that Dr. Waters always says is...
Free-for-all.
It's a free-for-all. We would try to keep it, I mean, Chair, I'd still chair the meeting and keep it from a free-for-all, I hope, but it would allow us to have a freer discussion, sit around a table, talk, answer questions, make points, et cetera. Or we can stay at the dais and do it like we always do.
Well, the problem is it wouldn't be a public meeting.
It would still be a public meeting.
Okay. But at a time probably when most people couldn't come. An hour or two earlier, and I really have a problem with that, and I'm not sure that we would get any more clarity than we will tonight, when people have come specifically to hear us discuss this. However, if that is something that people want to do, I would, I don't know. I would like to move that if we do that, that we have either at that pre-session or at a, the January 7th regular meeting, a presentation by John Henderson, who is a lawyer and an expert in special districts and metro districts, and has written for the Denver Post, and he has agreed, if council will vote for it, to do a presentation of about 10 minutes on metro districts to better inform the public about that.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. I don't object to the pre-session as long as there is no public comments at all, because we've already heard them. It would be, the reason I wouldn't mind having it is because even though Mr. Mulchine has said that we have a service plan, he gave, we didn't discuss that service plan. The vote was called, and we did not discuss it. So, I think that to say that we would, we would have regulatory, we would decide what was going to happen, that only happens if council discusses those service plans. It only happens if we can go through it. So, I wouldn't mind having the pre-session to, so that we all understand where everybody's coming from, so that when we do have a vote, it's just a clean vote, and we don't spend hours and hours discussing it. So, I would vote for that if there's no public, no public comments, just council. Except for, I would agree with councilwoman Christensen that it would be, it would be very interesting to hear from the other side, because we've only heard from the development side and the metro district person that was brought in who actually, she forms and works for public, for metro districts, so it was kind of one-sided. So, I wouldn't mind listening to the other side.
Just a quick question. So, Eugene, I believe the charter, our charter says that all public meetings, we have to have a public invited to be heard, right? Or does pre-session mean that we could avoid that? And I'm not arguing for or against, I'm just asking.
Mayor, council, Eugene May, city attorney, so the charter provides a public, an opportunity to be heard at regular and special meetings. Pre-sessions are not regular.
Okay.
This is a regular meeting.
All right. Then the question becomes, do we want to? But I just wanted to ask the question. All right. Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. Just two or three thoughts. I guess to begin with, just the last couple of comments about having, not having reviewed a Mountain Brook service plan. For some reason, I sat in a meeting here and asked a whole bunch of questions about that service plan. So, if we weren't discussing the service plan, I'm not certain what we were discussing before we voted on it. I mean, I could go back and pull my list out of my questions and the answers I got. And I have 20 more questions tonight, based on having read and marked up the Denver Post articles, a whole new set of questions that I think are really good questions that we need to address. So, for whatever it's worth, I must have been in a different meeting, because I thought we did, we went very deep on the, on the service plan and the questions and the answers we got, number one. Number two, I favor taking time to go, to have the kind of conversation we need to have. But I am, I'm not going to, just so you know, I'm not going to sit in a meeting as an elected official in public with expertise in the room and not call on it if I want to. So, I appreciate the fact that there are attorneys or whoever we could invite and be part of that discussion. We all need to hear all the perspectives on this. So, I would welcome that. But I'm not going to, I am not going to sit and be muted on inviting other, whoever, whatever expertise we could get to help us make the best possible decision. So, with that thought in mind, it would be helpful to me at some point for us to be, if we could agree, or at least express what our objective would be for, or the purpose. If the purpose of the, of the study session is simply to get our words in the room and then vote the way we're all going to vote, that's one thing. If the purpose is to get smart about how do you use all the tools in our, in our housing package to accomplish our housing objectives... to accomplish our housing objectives, that's a real different conversation. But I think we ought to be explicit. I think we owe it to the public to be explicit. I, I think to invite folks to a conversation and not let, not be clear that this is just, we're just going through the motions, because if votes are already counted, is not keeping faith with the public. And I'm, and I'm an agnostic. I've, I've voted to change the audits, I voted for the Mountain Brook plan. I have a whole bunch of new questions. I am not an advocate of, of, of metro districts. I am an advocate of doing what we need to accomplish our housing, our affordable housing objectives. We heard tonight concerns from people on, on a board with which I serve who dedicate their volun, their volunteers, they do it for no remuneration, to help us advance our affordable housing objectives. We heard from our, the Chair of our Library Board, there's a concern there. If, if we're going into this to make certain we're, we're wanting to work together to accomplish the objectives the community needs us to accomplish, I'm all in. But I wanna be as informed as we can be, and saying to the public they're not welcome is offensive to me, and saying we're only gonna hear from one part of the community is equally as offensive. So, I'd like to, I'd like to come back to it, but I'd like to know what kind of conversation we're gonna have. If, if, if it's not to deepen our knowledge, and it's simply to make points, then we ought to just get on with it.
Mayor Protem? Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would have no interest in a one-sided conversation, as in, if one side of the argument is wanting to call some sort of expert testimony, the other side of the argument should be allowed to call expert testimony. That just seems equitable, as in, some of the arguments concerning metro districts are, in fact, equity issues. And so, it only seems fair that if we continue to have this debate, that we allow for equal opportunity from both sides of the position to have their voices heard. And whether that means having, that would change the whole scope of a pre-session meeting, where it would become more likely having to be some sort of Saturday meeting, like we had the one time with the various stakeholders in the development community. More actually, like, probably, the, the, what were, what were yours called, Dr. Waters?
Cafes.
The cafes, where you actually had probably a more productive conversation than even we did during the inclusionary zoning ordinance conversations. That would seem more appropriate to me than even a pre-session at this point. I just don't feel that there's going to be anything productive that comes out of tonight's discussion, and I don't feel that there'd be anything productive with a one-sided conversation, because this council has been fractured since the election happened. It's been fractured. We need to come to some sort of consensus on at least some issues. And if that consensus doesn't happen on this issue, that's fine. But that's all I'm asking for, is that we try, at the very least, to come to consensus as a new council and give each other the time of day, and not argue ad hominem attacks or some implied invectives against each other, and just get it out there like a balanced body, as we should be, which is what our citizens deserve.
All right, so, I didn't count, but I think everybody's spoken twice at this point on the motion? No? All right. So, well, there's three people left in the queue. We'll see if people keep jumping in. All right, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. First, I'd like to congratulate the Mayor Protem on showing such leadership. I agree with what he said 100%. I think that it's very important that there be as many presentations are, as are needed. I think that there, in, in addition to the, to the presentation that Councilmember Christensen referenced, there could be a presentation of a plan for regulation of special districts in Longmont. There could be a presentation by the developer community that might want to say that, that the ordinance is fine as it stands. I don't think there are just two sides, but I think that what we really want to do is to say we need to arrive at what Longmont really needs. And I, I don't understand how we can do that if, and this is the second attempt I'd like to point out to do this, if we limit the discussion to argument, either to no arguments from outside interests or to arguments from only a single point of view. So, I think that the Mayor Protem is absolutely right. We need to have a flexible, roundtable kind of discussion, whether it's a cafe, whether it's the kind of, of discussion when we were initiating the development of our affordable housing ordinance, which, after all, has been very successful so far in tur, if you, if you go and count what's being permitted, and also observe the fact that the developer concepts that are coming forward to us have all studied the city's vision. And that wasn't happening before. So, I, I am speaking for too long, but I really think it's important that we take in new information, be allowed to present information, and have a free-flowing discussion. I also think it's very important that it be, that it happen in a venue where interested members of the public can be present.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. I want to restate when I said we didn't have a discussion. What I, I said it incorrectly. What I was referring to was the vote. The vote was called when it was brought up to whether or not we were going to have metro districts, and we did not discuss it between the first, the second, and the vote. Because we had a first, a second, and then the vote was called. And, and Councilman, you were upset as well about that, that there were, you wanted to hear what both sides said. Do you remember that vote?
On the ordinance?
Yes, on the ordinance. And that's what I was referring to. So, I wouldn't mind having, I, I agree with you that we should have both sides' perspectives, but would you agree to having only one professional from both sides? So that, because the problem is, council needs to discuss this. And if we use all of our pre-session time, listening to many different people giving their professional or just opinions on it, we're still not gonna get anywhere. And, and for me, what I heard from Council and Rodriguez was that council needs to discuss this. So, I really don't want to sit through a lot, a lot of testimony from both sides. Could we agree to have one professional from both sides of the argument? Or discussion?
Councilmember Christensen.
I never object to discussions of this, but this is the meeting where we should be discussing it, to me. This is the meeting that lots and lots of people have taken time away from their families to come talk. We represent the citizens of this town. They deserve to be heard, whether they're professionals in development or banking or law. They deserve to be heard. And now, we're talking about yet another meeting. We've already talked about this for a year. I am not opposed to this. I just don't understand what is going to be different about this, because it will still be Robert's Rules of Order. It will not be a facilitated conversation, and it will be more discussion. But I'm, I'm happy to do that. It's just that I want the public to still be able to come. And we've been discussing this for over a year, and I, I'll be happy to do this, but I don't know that this will move anything forward. But we can talk about it. Fine with me.
You have a question? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to ask Councilmember Christensen, in what sense we've been discussing this for a year, because in my understanding, we, we passed-
Although, Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
I'm gonna actually cut you off, because point of inquiry would refer to, like, you couldn't see, you couldn't hear, you need a bathroom break, but nice try.
Okay.
But if you wanna get back in the queue-
Is there another kind of a point that I can ask?
Yes.
Point of information, rather than-
No, not, not, no, but, but you can get back in the queue.
I'll get back in the queue.
All right, cool.
But now, I have spoken twice.
That's true. Dr. Waters.
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. The, for me, the question of how many people, how much input, all goes back to what we're trying to accomplish. Every, there's none of the, we all seven of, if, if there's things we agree on, there's no doubt in my mind. We all agree that we wanna get the highest quality housing options in this town for the lowest amount of, the lowest cost to residents, that are the most sustainable kind of approaches. There's no question about that. We agree on that. And there's, there's a whole bunch of other things I know we agree on. We agree on environmental issues, and we agree on sustainability issues, and we agree on climate issues. And, and I think we agree, I think we agreed, I hope we still agree, on the, the housing package, save this one tool that we wanna, we're still questioning, taking out of the toolbox. And it is divisive. There is no question about it. And, and I, it's interesting. The stakes are high. I guess maybe that's why it's, it's divisive as it is. I don't know. But if we, we heard enough tonight, then it would just seem to me that if we, if we are serious about the range of objectives and under the hous, under, just in the rubric of of housing affordability, from, from 30% AMI to 110% AMI, from affordable to attainable, it's not just this tool. If there are other tools we ought to be talking about, but if just, if, if the purpose is to figure out how to use the tools to avoid all of the evils that we've heard and read about, right? And it seems to me that somewhere along the line, then there's an if then. If you have this objective or these objectives, then here are the caps or the considerations. If you have thi, this set of objectives, here are, so it's a whole series of if thens, right? And what the, what the parameters are, if you, that are specific to the objectives we wanna accomplish on behalf of the community. Why, why are we unwilling to take this on that way and agree on what we're trying to accomplish, and, and when and how, or if? This is a tool that helps. Actually, it just feels like we're, we're not being explicit about what the intent is, and if we could do that, I'd know kind of how to think about moving forward.
All right, now I'm positive we've all spoken twice. Okay? Council, 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 yeah, 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 Councilmember, do you have anything to say? No? You don't have to. Okay. Councilmember Martin, because I told you to get back in the queue.
Thank you. Again, I, I just wanna understand how it can be said that we've been debating this for almost a year. We passed the ordinance, the amendment that, that allowed us to have residential districts. And that was in February of 2019. Now, it's December of 2019, and the discussion has just been reopened. So, we have not been discussing it for a year. I, I don't understand how that can be true.
All right, I'm just gonna, I'm, we've all spoken twice. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for the motion, only in, and we can figure out what we're gonna do later. But I kinda look at it as the affordable housing issue. Meaning that originally, I was, you know, I was opposed to the original idea of absolute inclusionary zoning, right? But then, we spent a great deal of time talking about, well, how to make it work. And we came up with something, I think, that worked pretty good, right? And as I'm hearing people talk, you know, there's people here in the audience that are influential thought leaders in our community, right? That influence this council, and we listen to you. Not always, but frequently. And what I'm hearing, what I'm observing, is that metro districts or special districts should be not, shouldn't be permitted because they could go drastically wrong. And I'm also hearing people saying that, well, no, they should be permitted, because, man, they could really be a tool that could help our, you know, our early childhood education and high-quality preschool efforts. Or we could develop areas of our town that are, you know, up on, north of Highway 66, that we can't, we are not going to provide the infrastructure to get water up there north of Highway 66. And so, it's a tool in the toolbox. I mean, so my question is, why can't we do this? So, my, my question, and what the reason why I'm gonna vote for it, is I would hope that this council could come to some type of an agreement where we approach this like we did the affordable housing. You come up with a checklist of, I mean, because if it's me, just so you know, if I'm the one in charge of policing this, you should absolutely not have metro districts. Because I probably am not gonna take the discipline, I don't have the discipline or the patience to go through each of the plans, to make sure that the metro district was done right. So, if you had a bunch of Mayor Bagleys on council, I'd say, no, no ma, no, no special districts, no metro districts, because I'm not gonna be very good at it. Dr. Waters is on council, I'd say, hey, if it's seven Dr. Waters, I mean, he's gonna make sure that the metro district, the special district, district is okay. So, I would like to see a, I mean, I hear the concerns, but I also believe that with a little bit of thought and help from staff and experts on both sides, we could come up with a checklist that would assure that all the concerns are addressed. That, that's what I'd be, that's what I'd be hopeful to hear in January. To, just like, because I didn't think affordable, I don't think any of us thought affordable housing would work the way it did. And we went from 3% to 6.2% in just a couple of years. So, I, I'd like to see that same type of synergy occur, and then if we can't figure it out, we kill it. That, those are just my thoughts. So, we've all spoken, we have a motion on the table. Let's go ahead and vote. Surprise, Michelle. Oh, yes, so, we are voting on having, the motion was, to conduct a pre-section on January 7th, 2019, wherein council members can have a more flexible, freewheeling conversation. Notice, I am not using the word free-for-all. At which point, we can have a discussion among the seven of us, pros, cons, beliefs, hopes, fears, et cetera. All right, the motion passes five to two with Councilmembers Christensen and Councilmembers Peck against, and the rest four. So, looks like we're having a pre-session on January 7th. And we'll, we'll talk about how we do that. Meaning "we" as in, let's get input from all council. All right, cool. Which brings us to 5D, revisions to the stormwater quality regulations. Councilmember Christensen? Go ahead, go ahead.
I moved that we have John Henderson speak at our pre-session and do a presentation. Do I have a second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded that John Henderson-
Yes.
Be invited to speak at our pre-session.
And do a presentation. He has a presentation. We have gotten numerous presentations from developers. We need to have one that is from someone who is an expert in special districts.
Okay, Dr. Waters.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think that'd be terrific. Do you have, are we talking about somebody on a volunteer basis, or is this a motion, are we retaining an attorney to come and?
Microphone? Go ahead, Polly. Microphone again. Put on the microphone. Turn on your microphone. Now, say it.
Okay, I thought it was on. Somebody else had theirs on. This is a presentation that he has volunteered to give for free, and take his time to drive up from Denver to do. This is what he does. He goes around and it tries to educate people about metro and special districts. And it would help balance out the the information that we've been getting exclusively from bankers, lawyers, developers. Thank you.
Do I show the floor?
Sure. Sure.
And, and journalists, we've got a lot of information from a journalist of the Denver, Denver Post just recently, so. Uh, so, just so, just so we're all clear, this is a volun- a volunteer and it's not, uh, he's not representing some, okay, that'd be terrific. Yep, I, I, I think that's a good idea.
Councilmember Martin?
I don't think that's a bad idea, but I don't accept the idea that all the information that has come to us has been on one side of the argument even for a second. So, I think that we need to, uh, allow for the possibility that there be an, a, a second presentation, uh, equal time.
Dr. Waters?
If we're talking about limiting input to one person, then I'm gonna object. Yeah, no, I think if the, it's to be inclusive, that's great. And then to get as smart as we can get from his perspective and any other, you know, expertise or experiences we can, we can factor into our thinking would be terrific.
All right, would you accept a friendly amendment to basically just say, we'll invite two experts to come and give a presentation on metro districts, including John Henderson? All right. Who seconded, are you seconded to that, Councilmember Peck? Would you accept the amendment? All right, so the motion on the floor is, we're gonna invite John Henderson and one other, as of yet to be determined, expert on the other side, to briefly present pros and cons of metro districts prior to our substantive discussion. All right. All right, so let's go ahead and vote. Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Petten. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, now, let's talk about revisions to the stormwater quality regulations. Oh, Harold, do you want to say something?
To be very clear, you want us to schedule a meeting for a pre-session with two spots on that, and that's all that is expected of staff as, as we're doing this.
Yep.
If there's any questions?
We'll let you know.
For staff, um, I would appreciate those questions being emailed to us so that we can aggregate that. I know Eugene was doing a lot of work, so it would be great if they could be emailed with enough time so that if they're specific to us, we can answer those questions.
All right, great. Yeah.
When would you like those questions by?
As soon as possible, I would say preferably no later than the first of the year.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to five D, revisions to the stormwater quality regulations. No, really, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. My name is Judah Gayoni, and I manage the City of Longmont Stormwater Quality Program, which is part of the Environmental Services Division. Um, Environmental Services Staff in the city's Attorney's Office would like to outline for you the latest revisions to the city's stormwater quality regulations, specifically in reference to Title fourteen, Chapter twenty-six of the municipal code. Um, and to properly understand these regulations, I'm gonna talk briefly about the stormwater quality program, because we're the ones implementing them. Um, and so, with that in mind, our primary purpose is to protect all waterways running through the city from all types of pollution. And as a background, and if you don't know, there are three types of piped water infrastructure running through the city. There's water distribution systems for drinking water, uh, there's sanitary sewers for wastewater, and there's storm sewers for storm water. And today, we're talking about the storm sewers, and I want to stress that when pollutants flow through our storm sewer system, they don't ever make their way into the wastewater treatment plants. That's where the sanitary sewer goes. What we're talking about are pollutants carried in our storm sewer, where historically water is released untreated directly to rivers and streams. And there are ta, there are many types of pollutants, uh, that can end up in our storm sewer. So, for example, cars leak oil and gas, and fertilizers and pesticides are applied to lawns, which can release chemicals in excessive amounts of nutrients, which can lead to things like algae blooms. Um, uncollected trash flowing through town gets picked up by rain and snowmelt and is transported into our waterways. Um, excessive sediment deposition from construction sites risks smothering stream fauna and damaging fish habitat. And then converting grasslands into roadways and parking lots and subdivisions fundamentally changes the hydrology of an area, and where previously rain and snowmelt was slowed down and filtered as it ran through the grass, it now flows quickly over asphalt and concrete, collecting various types of pollutants, um, and then, uh, ultimately scouring our rivers and streams and depositing them into our surface waters. Uh, now, to address the impacts that pollution from urbanized areas can have on surface waters, environmental regulations have been passed by federal, state, and municipal governments. And nowadays municipalities like the City of Longmont are required by federal and state law to implement specific regulations authorizing and requiring them to maintain stormwater quality within their boundaries. And it was these regulations that ultimately led City Council in two thousand and four to first adopt Chapter fourteen point two-six of the municipal code. Um, and this is the section of the code that provides us with the regulatory authority to implement the pollution prevention regulations required by federal and state law. Um, and it's the stormwater quality program's job to implement them on behalf of the citizens of the City of Longmont. Um, now, every few years, the state updates the regulations, and while these updates are typically somewhat minor, reflecting some clarification to existing regulatory language or keeping regulations current with new technologies and field methods, they can nonetheless impact the city's regulatory framework. And that's why we're here today. Uh, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, or CDPHE, have updated, clarified, and strengthened their stormwater quality regulations. Um, and in order to keep our code up to date with these changes, we also have to update, clarify, and strengthen Chapter fourteen point two-six of the municipal code. Uh, the topic covered in these regulations are stormwater quality specific and are principally broken into three main areas, namely permanent stormwater controls, erosion control on active construction sites, and illegal discharges. Permanent stormwater controls, or PSCs, refer to several types of engineered infrastructure, where they're permanently installed. Um, these installations are intended to capture sediment, bacteria, trash, and other pollutants commonly found in urban runoff. Um, and then the systems easily facilitate removal of those captured pollutants before they make their way into the storm sewer. Um, the requirement to install these PSCs is primarily triggered when large private developments over one acre in size come in through the development review process, and the stormwater controls are usually therefore designed by private engineering firms, constructed by contractors hired by private developers, and are usually privately maintained by HOAs and commercial businesses forever. The stormwater quality program must verify that these private systems are designed and constructed to specific technical standards, uh, are maintained regularly, and continue to function correctly over time. We're therefore directed by the state to have a regulatory mechanism in place authorizing ourselves to address any such incorrectly designed, non-functioning, or unmaintained systems. Uh, and Chapter fourteen point two-six achieves this through the permanent stormwater control permit system. Um, the proposed changes, uh, to this section of code are intended to clarify, update, and strengthen the requirements of this, uh, permit. Uh, in particular, the technical standards for these facilities have been formalized to comply with CDPHE requirements, um, and the fee structure for the PSC permit has also been updated, uh, to reflect implementation. I also wanted to specifically point out a new reference to low-impact development, or LID, in the proposed technical standards. Um, the standards now specifically state that an evaluation of low-impact development techniques is required for all applicable development sites, and again, that's sites over one acre in size. And I just wanted you to know that while the existing code already allows for the implementation of this standard, our hope is that by more clearly outlining for developers the need for this kind of integrated planning and engineering design approach, we'll start to see more sustainability-focused stormwater systems in future developments. I also know the council's devoted time and resources to the implementation of the sustainability evaluation system with the goal of helping to facilitate a more sustainable city. Um, and as this LID requirement implies, the stormwater quality program's regulations align with council's vision, uh, of a sustainable Longmont. To that end, I'd like to point out that these technical standards in and of themselves require sustainable design by developers, and so they implicitly meet that vision of the SES. However, they are mandatory for all sites disturbing over one acre of land. Um, and since their implementation's not really an alternative that a developer may choose to implement, they're not actually directly related to the SES itself. Instead, these sustainable designs must be constructed for all large developments. And moving on to active construction sites, um, during construction, large amounts of soil and sediment tend to be unearthed in order to build out a project site, and contractors are required by law to implement robust erosion control practices to keep this sediment internal to their site until the whole area is stabilized. Um, and for large, large developments, again, over an acre, uh, the city is required by law to implement an inspection and enforcement routine verifying that the control measures are properly implemented and re, uh, maintained by the contractor for the duration of construction activities. Um, and we achieve this through the issuance of what's called, uh, stormwater construction activity permit, or SCAP. And these code updates clarify the applicability of fourteen point two-six to active construction sites. And then again, the fee structure for SCAPs has been updated, uh, to reflect demands placed on the city due to their implementation. And while we're talking about fee changes, um, stormwater construction activity permits and permanent stormwater control permits are both managed by the stormwater quality program. Um, in regard to stormwater construction activity permits, by increasing the two-year permit fees from thirteen fifty to two thousand one hundred dollars will now cover approximately sixty percent of our inspection costs. Um, and we've also added a reduced-cost renewal fee in the amount of one thousand dollars for developments where the sites aren't fully stabilized but where no active construction is occurring. Uh, we implement a reduced inspection schedule, so the demands on the program are reduced accordingly. Um, and that option doesn't currently exist in the code, so contractors have to pay the full permit cost for renewal. Um, then for permanent stormwater controls, the cost, as it is currently listed, is negligible. It's a fifty-dollar permit for a five-year permit. Um, and it was intended by staff to be a placeholder for the initial rollout of the permit system, which was first adopted in two thousand and twelve. Um, and then subsequent implementation of the permit over the last number of years helped to clarify what the demands on the program are, and these five-year fees are anticipated to help, uh, more accurately offset some of those implementation costs. Uh, moving on to illegal discharges, um, it's illegal for any pollutant to be discharged to the city's storm sewer system, and the term pollutant is broadly defined in the municipal code to basically mean anything other than stormwater, and it's a fairly restrictive definition. Um, however, the code does include several exemptions to these prohibitions, which are included in the proposed ordinance updates, um, and they are intended to match CDPHE's new exemption language wherever possible. And then finally, um, several definitions and clarifications have been included. Um, none functionally alter the implementation of the existing code, but, uh, just represent changes recommended by staff based on experience implementing it. Uh, again, for consistency, we've matched our language to the language used by CDPHE and the regulations wherever we can. Um, and then to quickly summarize, uh, the ordinance revisions are needed to bring the code into alignment with the requirements placed on the city by CDPHE's stormwater regulations. They're principally intended to clarify technical standards related to permanent stormwater control systems for sites over one acre in size, particularly in regard to sustainable design and low-impact development, um, to update the city's illegal discharge exemptions, to match the state's exemptions, uh, and to clarify the code by updating and modifying definitions and naming conventions. Um, there's no structural changes needed to the stormwater quality program resulting from the adoption of the code, nor are there any new permits required for developers resulting from their adoption. Uh, the fees tied to the two existing stormwater quality permits, namely stormwater construction activity permits and permanent stormwater control permits, have been modified to more closely approximate the costs of their implementation. And with that, I'll open the floor to questions.
Now they are in the queue, but I was just gonna ask a quick question. What is the, briefly, um, I understand everything except the detection and elimination of illegal discharges?
Yep.
How would we do that? Is there a technology? Neighbors? Rewards?
It's, it's, it's generally the, the public will identify them, or city staff will be driving around town and identify them.
Got it. Like washing your car in the driveway, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, things like that, um, or like discharging your oil if you like do your own oil changes. And somebody will dump it into the storm sewer system without possibly not even realizing that it's not okay.
I was just wondering if there was some technology, but good old-fashioned ratting out people, got it, all right. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on your permanent stormwater controls under engineered facilities, do those include oil or gas wells? Are those considered engineered facilities?
Uh, not under the stormwater quality regulations, no.
Okay, I have another question. Then on page one seventy-one, um, it is about, uh, A eight and nine, it is about, uh, trucked or hauled wastes, including but not limited to septic recreational vehicle waste and water from mobile washing operations. The, the reason I'm asking this, I think we still have around Union Reservoir on County Road six, trucked, uh, Dale can probably answer this, trucked fracking water from those wells? I don't think we moved those wells. We didn't.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Peck, can you ask the question again?
Well, under this, uh, it says, uh, trucked or hauled waste, including but not limited to da-da-da-da-da-da. It is on page one, one seventy-one, A seven?
Just tell me the section, is it a section of the code that you're in?
Uh, what is that section? Illegal discharge prohibi, prohibitions and exemptions. Non-storm, stormwater discharges. I'm just curious, I, I just read it in the.
Your question was, though?
Because you have examples of trucked or hauled wastes, and I am wondering, does this include trucked fracking water?
There is a general exemption from, uh, oil operations, um, established through the MS four general permit that we meet the regulations for, um, but we would have to see a specific circumstance. So, for example, if, um, somebody was using city infrastructure, uh, like driving on a city street, and there was some potential for an illegal discharge, uh, we would have the authority to, um, limit that, uh, discharge.
The other thing I would add to that, I think, you know, the COGCC right now is going through a pretty significant update to their regulations, and as usual, we will take our call from the state lead, and, um, if we need to apply, um, our stormwater regs, I'm sure we're prepared to do that. I, if I understand your question right, whether or not we can somehow maybe, um, direct how they, uh, the route they would take, uh, to haul, for instance, as an example?
I, I just wondered if there was any fee, any permit, you know, is there any charge from the city if they dump accidentally or on purpose fracking water? Yeah, discharge.
If there's a discharge, that is illegal, there's no exemption for it. There is, there is no prohibition, there's no allowance in the code for any type of discharge other than those specifically called out in the exemption section, um, which it does not include frack water.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. Back to, uh, slide ten of fourteen, where you've got the fees. Just, this is my ignorance, uh, and I didn't find it in the write-up. Um, SCAP and PSC, give me the words.
Yeah, uh, stormwater construction activity permit is a SCAP, that's during active construction. Uh, permanent stormwater controls permit is in reference to those engineered systems that are permanently installed and maintained.
All right, uh, two other questions. Uh, the two to five years, this is, we're, we're talking about establishing these fees for two years and five years.
I'm sorry, yes.
We would revisit those two years and five years from now?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, the duration of each of those permits is two years. So if you, if you're a developer and you pay the proposed twenty-one-hundred-dollar new permit fee, that permit is good for two years, at which point you need to renew it.
Okay, if you don't have, if you've not finished your project?
Correct.
It has to be renewed, thank you. And last question, uh, the dramatic increases, you said they were placeholders, those reflect the, what you've learned about actual staff time and cost to the city to do the kind of inspection or the, the, um, evaluation of those permits?
Yeah, it includes, uh, plans review, uh, through the development review process, uh, it involves administration of the, the.
So that reflects experience and real costs?
And, yeah, experience and real costs of their implementation, correct.
Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. First, my extreme compliments on the artwork. They're quite lovely.
Thanks.
But what I noticed was that we're talking about essentially citizen and staff surveillance as the only available means for detecting and mitigating contaminants on the existing streets and the existing storm drains that are on our streets. And your first slide that had all those different sources of contamination, all those things happen on our streets.
Right.
Is there any consideration? Are there technologies that can be used to, you know, upgrade the storm drains so that they themselves can have at least more filtering processes than they always have, already have? And is that something that would have to be budgeted for the future? Or are you looking at things like that?
Right, so it kind of takes a couple of forms. So on the one hand, there's triggers for private development and public development that we talked about today, which is code-driven requirements. So when you disturb over an acre of land and you change the hydrology of a site, you are obligated to treat the runoff from that area to mirror the pre-development flow regime. When you're talking about in-city infrastructure, installing filtration devices and things like that, well, it takes a couple forms. So one, during construction projects that typically run by engineering services, they trigger these same requirements. There are some exemptions, however, that are associated with, say, putting in a roadway and then putting in an associated storm drain system. If we wanted to kind of proactively identify areas outside of that scope that we wanted to install and maintain, we would have to budget for that separately through the capital improvement project process.
Okay, so just thinking of my neighborhood, I think my property management corporation or possibly a gardening service that they employ dumped about a quarter of a load of manure in the street recently. That's probably something that shouldn't go down the storm drains, but it very likely did. And so, yeah. So what do we do about stuff like that?
So that's the illegal discharge section. So if there is some sort of pollutant in the roadway or otherwise in the right-of-way that we think is an acute risk to runoff into the storm sewer system, we're authorized and required to prohibit that discharge. Now, your point is taken. There's only so much you can do, like that pile of manure went unreported and it rained probably, and then it ended up in the storm sewer system. And, you know, to some degree, we're trying to mitigate the inevitable. And, you know, the more education and outreach, which is another part of the program that we undertake, and the kind of more thoroughly we enforce the illegal discharge section of the code, the better environmental protectionism we'll see.
Right, and the second half of my question was, in fact, about promotion and outreach. Because I wouldn't have known who to call. In fact, I didn't know who to call. I called my HOA.
Yeah, great.
And, but, what, I didn't hear what you have in terms of outreach and education planned in this. Are you going to fix that? Can I wash my car in my driveway if I use FIT? I mean, you know, there are things like that.
Very much appreciate the point, yeah. So there's an entire section of the MS4 General Permit, the state-issued regulations that mandate that we undertake education and outreach activities. I didn't bring it up here today because it wasn't central to the ordinance updates. But, so we're a part of the Keep It Clean Partnership, which kind of aggregates seven different municipal governments, allocating resources, time, and energy into a unified message for clean waters within our communities. So if I can provide you more information on our education outreach activities if you are interested.
If it comes up in the budget, we want to, you know, next year, we want to know how important it is. So at some point, it doesn't need to be now, but at some point, we should know that.
Sure.
Councilmember Christensen.
I also want to thank you, this is a very clear and detailed presentation. And I also am very fond of the redheaded cranes as somebody who spent years studying Chinese and Japanese art. I think that, and I'm glad that you brought this up now because we have been talking about the Sustainability Evaluation System and also the setbacks for the riparian corridor. And this is a further explanation of why it's needed because if you, this is all what drains into the rivers. So I think that most people are not purposely messing up this thing. I think there is, I have learned the hard way that people don't understand the difference between the sanitary sewer system and the storm system. They think that anything they dump down there goes through a filtering system. And they don't really understand that. And to me, the, speaking personally, the things that I have the most trouble figuring out what to do with are oils from, you know, car exchanges, which I usually have done for me these days. Gasoline from cleaning out your lawnmower in the winter. What do you do with that? What do you do with the oil? What do you do with fats from cooking? What do you do with leftover paint? This is all stuff that typically either gets thrown in the road and then drained into the system or gets thrown directly into the storm drain. Thinking, with people thinking, that it's going to be treated. And so we don't, I know that if I want to get rid of used paint, I can take it over to, drive it over to Boulder and take it to the hard-to-recycle place. And it just seems that we could do a better job of actually having here a facility to take some of these things like oil, gas, paint, and fats. Because I would suspect that those are the main things from a household that get dumped down the drain because people just don't know what to do with them.
Simple, it's simple for them, yeah.
Yeah, so what are we doing to help people actually have a facility so they don't break the law? No, I don't think anybody really wants to.
I don't know if we've had any discussions about establishing that kind of facility to date, but we can...
We do have some, Dale's gonna help, but I think you can take oil to the Waste Diversion Facility.
Right.
Oil to the Waste Diversion Facility on Martin, yeah. Right, off to the side down at First and Martin, you can take oil. And Councilmember Martin and Mayor Bagley, we are planning on making a pretty detailed presentation, I think in the first quarter of 2020, on several areas in the sanitation division. That's where we would highlight the potential for additional services that the city could continue or consider offering, you know, along with the cost to do that. But that's coming up. That is something that we have on our plate to bring forward.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much, appreciate that presentation, you did great. You survived. Congratulations. All right, let's move on to 5F, discussing potential retreat topics for February 8th, 2000... Discuss, a discussion on potential retreat topics for February 8th, 2020, City Council Retreat. I don't know why that's so hard to say, but it seemed to be.
Good job, Mayor. Mayor Bagley, Members of Council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to start retreat planning. So at your meeting a couple weeks ago, you chose February 8th as your retreat, which is a Saturday. We took the liberty of scheduling this at the wastewater treatment plant for a couple reasons, yeah. Just because as we're talking about, the new CNG, recycled CNG building will be just about ready. We'd love to show you what that looks like, as well as some of the new trash trucks that will be powered by you, as Dale says. And they have a very nice conference facility there. So that's where we are planning to meet in order to take advantage of some of that. But what I'd like to talk to you about today are topics of conversation for the retreat, integration into the existing work plan, how would you like to do that? Any desire for team-building time, dinners, any hopes for the retreat? What is it that you're looking for? And then I will draft an agenda and bring it back to you.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I've had some conversations with some of my fellow colleagues that go to CML or NLC. And sometimes we ask ourselves, what is the most appropriate way to bring forward new ideas that we get presented to at National League of Cities or at Colorado Municipal League? A couple that I had, or, so I guess my first point would be that we have a discussion item where we can bring forward these ideas in retreat, as well as a way to connect them to our existing council work plan. And I'm going to give examples. One would be, as we understand our changing demographics in the city of Longmont, that it'd be pertinent to have a discussion considering partnering with AARP about making livable cities for our seniors and what those kinds of changes might entail. As well as another one concerning the fact that it has been expressed to us that there's federal funding starting to be tied to, as well as Dr. Cog funding, starting to be tied to a Vision Zero network having to do with traffic safety. And so I've spoken with some staff members and heard both the skepticism as well as possibly some, you know, benefits to being a Vision Zero city or not being a Vision Zero city, as well as the implications of the funding mechanism surrounding that. And so I would suggest that we have a, at least a topic of conversation surrounding possible, A, pilot programs or certain programs that could benefit the city either through funding or just in general because of our either demographics or how it may tie into our council vision.
Councilmember, you know what? Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring, pulling you out of the queue, you're up top.
Is that procedure? Is that, okay? So some of the suggestions that I would like to, or topics that I would like to see discussed would be addressing, so along with team-building time, but really just addressing trust. I've worked with my building, I've worked with several buildings. I'm Vice President of the Education Association, so I've worked with buildings throughout the district, as well as the state, at the state level in working with different districts around equity and just kind of breaking down some barriers. So I have some ideas, but how we address team-building as a council has to be very strategic. So I'd like to give time to just develop, you know, have a strategic plan in how we build trust within our council and along with team-building as well, to kind of get to the root cause of what's happening and how we can build as a strong coalition, as a strong council. Another piece is I'd like to look at our rules of procedures, our bylaws. It seems, as I was looking through there, there's a lot of gaps that I noticed. It's very skeletal, is that, if that's the right word? Yeah, it is the word I'm looking for. But really looking at straight procedures and how we conduct ourself, not just within our council meeting, but outside. We have recently, in our, in my local association, revised our bylaws that included dealing with technology and how we conduct ourselves on social media, as well as how we interact via email. That's a whole new realm that has not, that is, that's fairly new for forms of government and how we interact with each other on there as well. So I'd like to add those pieces.
And Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring, one of the things that we have done sort of traditionally in the retreats is give just a small training on community involvement. When our community involvement team met, we felt like if that was still an opportunity, that equity piece is what we would focus on this year.
Okay.
Councilmember Christensen.
I think that the suggestions of Councilwoman, or Mayor Protem Rodriguez and Councilwoman Hidalgo Ferring are excellent. I would second all of those. I would like us to spend some time updating and discussing how, what our progress is on the, our last goal, the goals that we have already been working on the last year. And just spend a little time talking about that. And I still think those are excellent goals and we should celebrate what we've succeeded in and discuss what we want to do in the future to move those, both of those forward, the main ones. I also think, and I think this sort of wraps into what both of the previous two speakers have been talking about, we need to discuss the creation of an independent ethics committee, which could be part of a discussion of process and procedure. And I'd like to spend a little time with that.
So what I'm hearing so far is to review the progress on the work plan and to review and kind of recommit to what that looks like, as well as looking at a couple new connections around livable cities and Vision Zero. Team building that involves a trust, trust element. How do we build trust on team building? Some, hopefully, CI training and talking about equity and policymaking for elected officials. And then conversation around rules of procedure and ethics. That's what I have so far.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Yeah, there isn't anything that's been said so far that I don't agree with. In terms of affirmation of policies that we're working toward, there's one thing that I think we need to address specifically, which is, you know, we have the council work plan. There are some things that we've made good progress on and that we have a well-understood trajectory. And affirmation is, I think, as was said by one or more of you already, the right thing to do with that. I think at the, at both of the previous retreats, or the both retreats of the previous council, I guess, is what I wanted to say, we felt complacently like our resolution to reach 100% renewable energy by 2030 was kind of a done deal and that, you know, that PRPA just had that and it was cool. And what we're finding is that that is a process that needs to be monitored and affirmed continually by the council. And so I would like to have a discussion about that. Maybe a short report about, and maybe an outside report because, you know, there are watch group groups that I'm sure would love to speak about that. That, just to kind of give us a roadmap for monitoring and making sure that that's progressing adequately and providing plans, including plans for advancing that agenda inside the city because there are things that the city can do. So that's one thing. And then the other thing is I'd like to consider adding new goals that are consistent with our goals, such as greenhouse gas and electrification, greenhouse gas reduction and electrification. And also something a lot more serious or a lot more specific than we have what we've been doing about early childhood education.
Dr. Waters.
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. A lot of this is, will be just kind of iterations or maybe different takes on what you've already heard. I had, for me, I'd put a what's next here in relationship to advancing our goals. But in addition to that, we had a couple of failed ballot questions. And we have a couple of feasibility studies underway right now. And I, I don't know if, I don't know if retreat's the right place to do it, but at some point in time, I think we needed to have a conversation about what's next, specifically in relationship to those ballot questions that didn't fail. Are we going to revisit them when and how and why? And what are the implications for the city with the feasibility? And what are the implications for the city with, with the feasibility studies that are underway, and what wins the timeframe, and how do we clear decks, and how do we think about positioning ourselves? And I think there's a relationship between at least one of the ballot questions and those feasibility studies. And then, I had listed here, to envision the future of transportation, and the implications for local transportation planning and policy, or policy and planning. And it may be that the Project Zero, or Vision Zero, is the, maybe that's the way to frame it. I'm, you know, we've heard one presentation, I'm not as familiar with, with Vision Zero as I probably need to be, but I'm pretty certain that we need to be, we need to be clearer on what is transportation locally and regionally, but in particular locally, look like over the next decade or two, and what does that imply for us in terms of infrastructure, parking structures, and the things that we're going to need to support an electrified transportation system. So, for me, however, to connect those to the other ideas.
That's it for the queue. I haven't heard anything I dislike, so I don't have anything to add, other than what's already been said. Do you have a good list?
A quick count, and that's probably 12 hours without lunch.
Yeah.
So, my, my question is-
Half that, whatever it is.
Would the council be all right if we moved rules of procedure and the ethics conversation to a different space, either back into this during study session, or during a pre-session? Is that something that you would-
I, I would, I mean, I would like-
We already have a motion about the ethics.
Right. I personally would like to remove anything from the council retreat that could potentially be of high conflict. And I, that topic could be-
Might be it.
-high conflict. And I'd like to get past that, and have that before we do our retreat, so we can move on.
That's what it seems like to me, that that's actually more timely, and I believe that the motion to be able to have the conversation around ethics is going to be happening prior to the retreat, anyway. I think, right?
Councilmember Christiansen.
Okay.
Well, it shouldn't be high conflict, it should be low conflict, actually, but if we do have that, I was just suggesting that we have that as part of our discussion of how to, what Councilwoman Hidalgo Ferring said, in terms of procedure and in terms of process. We need to discuss who decides that, and I think we need to discuss it.
I'm happy to put them all on the agenda and lay it out, so you can look at it. I'm just, I'm leery that there's not enough time to really talk about any of these topics, if you had them all.
One more thing. You know, some of these things, like revisiting things that the voters have already turned down, I don't know that we need to do that over the retreat. We can revisit that in city council if we choose to, and, I don't know, it seems to me that some of these things are topics that we can talk about here, rather than broader topics, like our, the goals that we did last year, and how we are continuing to work on early childhood education, for instance, and affordable housing, and the Cultural and Convention Center. Those are all part of the goals that we've been working on, and I think we need to discuss those in preference to some of these other smaller, more detailed things that we could, that would be better to have as a public meeting.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. So, I would like to keep that, especially to look at rules of procedure, and make sure that it hasn't been updated in a very long time. And it's really good that Councilwoman Hidalgo Ferring brought that up. And as far as transportation goes, I agree with Councilwoman Waters, that we need to discuss that. But Advanced Longmont 2.0 connectivity is actually addressing a lot of that, so perhaps we should have a report from them before that. And the executive session that I asked for on RTD also will address part of that regional transportation. So, before we open that up to, to any kind of discussion at a retreat, I think we should get information from both of those sources. And we can get that, there's no point in us working on it, if it's already being worked on, and we agree with the process that is taking place. Our own transportation planner, Phil Greenwald, is on that board, so we should have that information first. So, I would, I would say we could put that aside, and if we have time, talk about it, because we should have that information before the retreat, anyway.
I guess my question is, is I'm sitting here in my head thinking, what are we hoping to accomplish by some of these things? And I just, I just want to be perfectly, make sure we're all on the same page.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Okay. What I want to accomplish with the work plan is that I know that I have not been involved with the Arts and Convention Center, and that there have been meetings about that, I want to be updated. I have not been involved in the education piece, even though I've asked to be put on that email list, and they've had two meetings, and I did not get previous meet, late, later meetings that I did not get invited to. So, I want updates on what's going on in those meetings, and that we should all be involved at some point. Where are we going with those work plans? I do think that some of this can be comprised into the work plans. You know, a lot of what we're talking about, it's about the work plans, so it isn't, it isn't all one-off projects. Would that make your list shorter, if you-
I think if I could try to craft it into the, so the work, I'll put it together and bring it back to you for consideration.
Okay.
I do believe that the feasibility study for the Performing Arts Center, I believe you'll be hearing back from them in January, late January, is last I heard. So, fingers crossed, it'll be right before the retreat, so.
And really what I was talking about, the topics that I've heard, like the Ethics Committee, rules of procedure, emails and social media dealings, et cetera, root problems, when I'm talking about, when I'm hearing those words, I'm wanting to know, what are we going to be talking about?
We are going to be deciding, hopefully as a council, how we act as a council without outing people in public. What is our procedure for doing that? What is our protocol? What are the actual functions of council, and how do we carry those out? We, we're, as Councilman Rodriguez said, we, I mean, Mayor Protem, we are fractured, and I think that we need to fix it. Look at what our rules are, look at our, do we have protocols for certain things? If not, let's put them in place. And I know that, this is disturbing to some people, but I don't want this to happen to me again in public. So, we need a protocol for it.
The, I'll wait to say what I have to say. Councilmember Christiansen. Actually, sorry, sorry, sorry. Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring.
So, I guess I'll speak to why I brought this forward. I mean, really, what, what I envision, when we look at rules of procedure, is kind of analyzing as a, as a group. What, what does that mean? How does that, how do those pieces look like? What is our interpretation on that? And if, we feel that there are components to our rules of procedure that we need to reevaluate and put into language, I think having that time during the retreat would give us that opportunity to have open conversation around it. And all I'm pulling from is my own experience in working in committees where we reevaluated and we redid language on our Board of Director bylaws. So, typically, that's how we, we handled when we restructured, is having this conversation, where this isn't really the forum, it's very difficult to carry those conversations. We're in a retreat setting, we're at a table, or however the setup is, but it gives us that opportunity to have open conversation of how we, we, each of us interpret the language, and how we need to maybe restructure the language to best suit our needs as a community.
Okay. Councilmember Martin? I'm sorry, Councilmember Christiansen? Sorry, got your hopes up, but, oh, go ahead.
Councilwoman Hidalgo Ferring has a lot of expertise in negotiations, and in this sort of thing, and I suggest that we make use of her expertise in these things, and really examine the, our procedures and protocol that we have not discussed, well, ever, that I've been on. And the rules of procedure, and some of the things in the charter have not been updated for 20 years. I think it's a good idea to take a look at some of those things. In terms of early childhood education, one thing I forgot to mention, and it's very important, as you know, Sandy, we talk about the CML things, and the things that have been done statewide, huge things were done last year statewide. And I would like us to be updated on the things that have happened in early childhood development on a statewide basis, because we need to not be trying to recreate the wheel when it is actually, many of the things that we had hoped for to improve early childhood education have been achieved by our state legislatures, and that's something that we really should celebrate, and know that, then we can build on that, instead of trying to imagine what that is. But I don't know that there is enough awareness of that. You know a lot of that, and there are other people who have been keeping close watch on what the state has been doing. So, I'd like an update as part of that early childhood education, on what the state has done this year.
Your last question, family dinner?
Hold on one second. Oh, we're not done. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. You're not going to like this suggestion. I think that if, if some of the things on this agenda should, are going to stay on this agenda, as opposed to being factored out into a separate session, that we should go back to the original format for the retreat, and have a day and a half instead of a day. And then, we could put the things that might be divisive, as opposed to the things that we're all 100% behind, and just want to figure out how to push, well, let's put the, the things we all love on the first day, and the things that might make us mad on the second day. And, and then it'll all work, you know? That's, that's what I, that's what I think that we should do. And in terms of, of, two of the items on the, that have been discussed, Advanced Longmont 2.0 is doing good work in several of its sessions, not just connectivity session, and so, I don't know whether we will all have had the opportunity to have reports from those groups beforehand, but it would be great if we did, so that we could align, or decide that we didn't have to do something, or whatever. So, I'd like, at least for you, to try to get those on, on agendas beforehand, or have a short presentation on progress from them at the beginning of the retreat, so that we have it firmly in mind. And I think those were the two things. Oh, 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 and the legislative, the, same with the legislative stuff. If we could get a brief, like 30-minute legislative report from you on the things that specifically would inform our decisions, then that'd be great.
And Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Martin, I would just point out that you, that you just approved Advanced Longmont 2.0 last month. I'm not sure how much update they'll have, but certainly going into more detail on particular sections is something we can absolutely ask.
So, I'm sorry, I'm going to butt in. These are sub, subcommittees off of 2.0. So, it's, it's not the big 2.0 thing, it's just these little subcommittees.
Gotcha. Thanks.
I'm not going to say anything tonight, but if the retreat, ah, what the hell. So, I don't have any interest in sitting down and trying to have, so, tonight, right? This is what I feel. Without reparations being made, it's going to be very tough for me to participate in a conversation over, and that's the reason why I asked, well, what does, what are we going to try to accomplish? It's hard to come together as a body, whether it's a family, or whether it's a board, and feel like that you're kind of being gaslit. And that's what I feel like tonight. We had approximately 12 members of the public come tonight, and say things specifically that I felt were about me, many mentioning my name. And whether you call it Move Longmont Forward, Longmont Area Democrats, you know, Get Out the Vote, or Go TV, or bastions of liberal extremist headquarters, whatever you want to call it, the group comes together, and they, they give a front, after I believe what they do is coordinate, making me feel like, oh, Mayor Bagley, you know, you really acted inappropriately here over the issues that we've been dealing with the last couple weeks. Now, we're casually putting it on the agenda for the retreat, in order, I just feel like I don't have any interest in having a conversation in order to come up with rules and regulations to somehow make me feel like I've misstepped here, and I won't participate in that. That might sound totally brutal, but in my mind, that will just lead to a very unfortunate, negative, five steps back discussion. I would rather deal with issues that are, you know, looking at our goals, and moving forward on figuring out, how are we dealing with our goals? I would like to look at, you know, our work plan, the previous councils, most of us, all but one, you know, agreed to. I'd like to look at those kind of things. But I'm not going to allow, or be part of a conversation that's going to somehow limit my speech, or my activities, or actions, when I feel that the only recourse is to turn to the public, because there's nowhere else to go. So, we can set the agenda. I don't know how I will deal with the specific issue when it comes time, but I can't imagine me just sitting there and participating in a conversation that's going to try to restrict me when I think that, you know, there needs to be redress, or an issue that I feel needs to be addressed. I don't know if I'm making much sense, and I don't want to, I'm sure I'm offending people, but that, that's just my thoughts. Councilmember Martin?
I'm sorry.
No, sorry. Go ahead. Sorry, I cleared the queue, jump back in.
I understand that, that that's a risk, and I think I've already said I would, my preference would be that that not be part of the retreat, and that it be a separate discussion, but that if it needs to be part of the retreat, it should be on a second day, so the second half-day. But there is something else, which is- But there is something else which is that we should set the ground rules such that it's not about what anybody did, not about what one set of council members did, not about what the mayor did, not about what another set of council members did, but rather a bunch of stuff has been uncovered that has said, there are no defined mechanisms for this council to police itself. And we would like to have some procedures that we all understand, that we police ourselves. So we could even, you know, I've been hanging out with Tinkermill lately because they have a no politics rule. And, and so in the last couple of months, it's been a great place for me to be because the political ground is like shifting sand. And it's, it's nice to just be accepted. And that's what we need to do. We need to set ground rules. I see Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring over there nodding. It's not about what anybody has done in the last two months. It is about when stuff like this happens, what are the ways we deal with it and what are the ways that we avoid stepping into the quicksand? So I think that with, with, with a ground rules like that, it could be done. And that would be my suggestion.
Dr. Waters?
I don't know. I'm just sitting here thinking, trying to, trying to frame in my mind what we're thinking about or what, you know, the, what, how this rolls up into a session. I'm not interested in therapy sessions. I, I might need therapy, but I'm not going to go through it with this group and whoever you bring in to do therapy with us, number one. Number two, I heard the reference to not being called out or wanting to do this, you know, do whatever hard work we have to do that's edgy and uncomfortable someplace. We're public, we're elected officials. And, you know, and I don't mean to direct this to anybody, but I don't care, I stepped into this role expecting to be, to do my work in public and be called out every Tuesday night and the other six days of the week if I need to be because I'm accountable to everybody who's paying attention or not in this town. So I'm not going to, I'm also not going to participate in, in an activity where, where I'm asked to do something that I think is less than what I think to be principled, transparent, and public. That's where, that's why I'm here. So however we put this together, in the interest of not being conflicted, we could, we can, we could tee this up so that we can go at it. But if we can't deal with these issues that are fracturing us in public, who are we? We're adults. We've been at this a long time. If we can't do this in the public square, we don't deserve to be in these seats. Bottom line for me. So team building, if you can figure out how to build team building, that's fine. If you want to do trust activities, for me, the place where being, where trust starts is being trustworthy. And if I'm not trustworthy, I don't expect anybody to trust me. And the people I trust in my life are the people who are worthy of that trust. So if you want to make something out of that, go for it. I've been around the bargaining table most of my life, so I understand power bargaining and consensus bargaining and win-win bargaining. So we want to get schooled in bargaining, that's okay too. But at the end of the day, we ought to be really clear what we want to accomplish as a council on behalf of the people who we serve. And if we don't get that done in a retreat, then it's not going to be a good use of time, in my view.
Councilmember Christensen?
This council is completely dysfunctional right now. We do need to discuss procedure and protocol. And we need to discuss it like grownups, as Dr. Waters has said. Those who don't want to discuss it don't have to, I guess, but I have sat here week after week and been publicly slandered, and I have been libeled in the paper. And if I can discuss this stuff in a, like an adult, I would hope all of us can because we need to discuss protocol and procedure and ethics so that we can actually return to discussing the business of the city like adults. That's all we're supposed to be doing. We serve, it is not true that we're not, that we're self-policing. We serve the people. They are the ones that police us. But we need, in the interim between votes, we need to actually have some procedures and protocols so that we don't keep attacking, so that we don't have certain members of city council attacking other members of city council. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. This isn't really, what I am looking for is not about any one person. It is about a playbook for us on how do we, what is the protocol when certain situations come up? So that all seven of us are following that same playbook and that we all know what the other one's going to do if a situation comes up. You talk about gaslighting? We were gaslighted. And that's very hard to have any kind of a reaction in public that is not, that is so unprofessional. And that's what I'm trying to avoid. And please don't laugh at me, which is why we need protocols, because you are laughing at me right now. So that is the whole point, is that we all know exactly what the process is when certain things come up. And that should be part of our rules of procedure, I think. They haven't been looked at for a very long time. We should do that in public. And I, I think your second day is a good idea, half-day, to discuss it. So I, I still think it needs to be on the agenda.
Dr. Waters?
A couple of things. In terms of laughter, I'm just following your example as you laughed at Councilmember Martin last week for making a comment, but I'll try not to do that anymore, number one. Number two, we could talk about slander and how, and how council members have slandered other council members in formal communication, but I won't bring that up tonight in deference to trying to move the, the conversation along. But if you'd like to talk about behaviors that fail your, that fail to meet standards tonight or any other time, let's get at it. Let's, and let's not be nuanced about it. Let's be specific if, if we're going to have the conversation. Now, I would say, I observed from up there, conversations about council dysfunction. I don't think this is a dysfunctional council. There are, there are certainly flashpoints right now. Once we get past some of the petty stuff, and I don't think, actually, some of the ethical stuff and the personal stuff, we, I think we still do a pretty good job with working through issues. I don't think, I think, I think we're pretty functional from that standpoint. It's not fun right now. It's not very personally satisfying right now, if that's called dysfunction. But, but I recall sitting up there and hearing references to a, a former council, not the last two years, but before that, that was dysfunctional. And the one thing that, that I know is constant between that council and this council are the same people who are talking about dysfunction. So let's, if, if we're going to have a retreat, I'm happy to do, have a retreat and get after the goals or focus on the goals we need to get after, but I'm not going to be part of a conversation. I don't know what, in this context, I don't even know what gaslighting means. We received from Councilmember Christensen, the Colorado Municipal League handbook for elected officials. And in that handbook, there are specific guidance, and on that website, specific guidance on how to deal with the very kind of things we're talking about. If there are better resources, let's, you know, let's take a look at them. But what's happened in this situation is by the book, in terms of the procedures laid out by the very resource that you brought to us and that we've referred to over and over again.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Yeah, gaslighting is, is, I think the definition of it is convincing someone that they're losing their mind. And I don't think anybody's been doing that. But I do think, and, and I, I think this last five minutes of discussion has been a real indicator of how hard it's going to be to do what we say. It's five minutes to 11:00. I move that we extend the count, this council meeting no more than 15 minutes. Any objections?
I think we should leave at 11:00, no matter what.
We have to vote then.
Let's vote. The motion is extend the meeting no longer than 11:15. Motion for means let's keep going. Against means let's end at 11:00. All right, we're going to go to 11:15. I didn't see the vote tally, but three of us didn't want to and four of us wanted to keep going, so that's all right.
I still have the floor, correct?
You do, Councilmember Martin.
Uh, let's see, gathering, regathering my thoughts, they don't regather as fast as they used to. I, I think that one of, one of the points of contention that we're seeing here is that there is a hierarchy of regulation. You know, there are things like the Colorado Open Records Act that is, that begins at the matter of state law, and there are other things that are, that are county operations. And then I think that, again, in terms of, of what may be done and what may not be done at the city level to make sure that we are all on the same page about what we can ask the council members to do and what we can't ask the council members to do and how we can ask them to behave and what the ground rules of them. We have a pretty big gap in the city charter about that, and we should figure that out. But I think, and, and here's my question about it happening on the second day of, of the retreat as opposed to somewhat later, is that I think we need a lesson on how that hierarchy works and maybe, you know, it seems like in some ways what we need is, is a way for the council to police itself with respect to the state and county level laws, district level laws that we are supposed to be operating under. Because I, I think a lot of us and a lot of the public as well either aren't aware of those things or have differing opinions about what it really means. So I think that if we do that, in addition to the ground rule I suggested before, which is we don't talk about what just happened, we just talk about what could happen and what should happen. But in addition to that, we need a review of those laws. And it isn't giving Sandy very long to get that ready for us. So is there any law that says that the second half day of the retreat couldn't be a little bit later than the first half day of the retreat? I mean, maybe, you know, council, Assistant City Manager Cedar should tell us when she can put that half day together.
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Martin, I'd really like to confer with my attorney buddies before I would answer that question, but there, it's your retreat and however you'd like to set it up, to have that kind of an opportunity later on, certainly, I mean, that's absolutely within your purview.
Yeah.
And like I said, I'd rather chat with, with my partners in the attorney's office before I was able to say what that timing was.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting you to, to do it now. I just think that that's a big part of the question. And I would really love to have, you know, I, I don't think this council is, is dysfunctional either because I think that this evening, we, especially when there was a, you know, the public invited to be heard, could have had us all screaming from the ceiling. And instead, we had a pretty, you know, decent civil discussion about everything we had on our agenda, except the things that we had to skip. But even when on skipping something, we had a pretty decent discussion. So I don't feel dysfunctional at all. In fact, I feel kind of encouraged that maybe we are going to be able to put this back together after a, after a blow-up. But I want it to work. I want the first day to work, and I want the second day to work. And if separating them in time is the way to make that happen, then I think we should separate it in time. But we've got a day and a half. That's the traditional amount. Let's take the day and the half, the day, the first day, the day we planned it, and the second day when we can. And Sandy can come back to us with a proposal next week.
And right now, right now, what are your thoughts, staff?
So here's my thought.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just based on the tenor of the conversation. A, I'm probably going to say Sandy, under my direction, will probably not work this. And I'm going to reach out to someone like Sam Mamet, who I think has dealt with these issues that I think could be more productive at it. He understands the world, he's seen a lot of things. I think you all need to, so here it goes. What do we want to accomplish and what do we want to do? And how do we want to approach it? I think the idea of dealing with the, mixing these two issues, I don't think is going to be productive, to be honest with you, based on my experience and what I've seen in other communities. And I don't want staff to get in the middle of it either because this is a council conversation. And so just know that I'm going to be very careful with the folks that have to work with me or work for me in this process. I need to know what you all want to do and how you want to approach it. And I need consensus in the council of how we want to structure this agenda.
I don't think you're going to get consensus on anything relating to ethics or anything pertaining to the last month, regardless of how we approach it. Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think cementing the first day is the important portion here. And that includes all the pertinent topics to our work plan. I think that we might need, or you may need as well, some consultation time to figure out if a second day is the appropriate venue or some other special thing with a special facilitator is the appropriate venue. I don't think that setting that specifically as our retreat agenda is appropriate at this time, and that's where I sit.
Councilmember Christensen?
The ethics portion seems to be the most contentious thing. So I would, and we have already discussed having a disoliditated discussion about that. So perhaps we should take that off, but I still think we need to discuss, not related to any, we need to discuss in a dispassionate way, the rules and procedure that we, that are part of city government that we have not updated for 20 years. And I, if we leave the ethics thing out of it and have that as a separate discussion at another time, I, I would hope that would solve things. But I, I would think that Sam Mamet would also be a good person to discuss procedure and, and protocol. But anyway, that's my opinion. I, we can leave the ethics part out. I think many things will be decided. This, the rules and, the procedure and protocol does not have anything to do with any current controversy. It has to do with the future of this body and straightening things out that where there are, as Councilman Hidalgo Ferring has said, huge gaps in what was decided 20 years ago when we were a much smaller town and also had a strong mayor system, I think, and we do not have that anymore. We have a weak mayor system, so.
And I think I need to be clear, anything that is in the charter, you all can make recommendations for changes, but that has to go to a vote of the people. So, I mean, so you have the charter component that outlines rules and procedures, and then you have council rules and procedures. you have council rules and procedures. Yeah, and that's by ordinance.
Do we have, do you have instruction for day one?
Mayor Bagley, the only question is whether you want to have dinner. That's the only one left.
I think, yeah, dinner's always good. The, I guess, the issue, yeah, so can we agree to move forward with a one-day retreat, and then let's continue to think about and see what happens on day two? Can we agree there?
I have direction, thank you.
And my suggestion, I threw that name out, just because I know him. If you want to do it, I'd have to talk to him.
No, I guess that was for day two, a potential day two? You mentioned who do you want to come in and talk?
I think on certain things, like goals and objectives, and where we are, and updating on those things, because I've heard, I want to update, I mean, on all of the primary goals and objectives. I'm fine doing that. And as staff, what I was talking about is the other component, is where I need an outside facilitator.
And we don't, and right now, I don't think you have consensus on doing it second day for that purpose.
And I just need clear direction from council on that, and how you want to do it, and when you want to do it.
We'll let you know. Okay. All right, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. I just want to point out that whether we call it the second day of the retreat or not, we have already voted to have this discussion. So it's just a matter of figuring out when we can find the facilitator. I completely agree that it shouldn't be Sandy, and when I said Sandy before, because I don't want to put her under the hot lights, but she's our legislative expert, and I was caught, I was talking about it in the narrower context of somebody framing the hierarchy of pertinent regulations. And I'm sure she could still research that and come up with it, but somebody else could do it and may already be an expert. So, again, her name was not a specific suggestion, it was just who would do it if it was regular course of the city proceedings. But we have, my point was, we've already agreed to do this exercise. What I'm saying is, let's do it at a time when it's not going to wreck anything else, and let's do it at a time when we can be fully prepared for it.
Councilmember Christensen.
I guess I'd like some clarity. I thought we already decided to have a one-and-a-half-day meeting. I would like to take a vote.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I move that we have a one-and-a-half-day retreat, the second day to be determined, but I believe we have many, many things to discuss, and I would like a one-and-a-half-day retreat. Do I have a second?
All right, we have a motion for one-and-a-half-day retreat, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring. Councilmember Martin, hold on, I know, and Michelle's like, we're going to vote. All right, sorry, Michelle, clear it. Councilmember Martin.
I just want a clarification. Is this a severable one-and-a-half-day retreat? So we're officially deciding, defining our ground rules and ethics discussion as the second day of the retreat? Or are you saying, Councilmember Christensen, that we're going to have them on consecutive days? Because my vote will change depending on which it is.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, I think, you know, I don't want us to set up two separate days. I want us to sit down and discuss things for a day and a half, so that it saves staff time, it saves our retreat time, it saves everything, so we just sit down and have a one-and-a-half-day discussion. We have so many good suggestions from Mayor Protem Rodriguez, and from Councilwoman Hidalgo Ferring. I think that will, and also updating things. I just think it's going to take us time, and I think we need to take the time to give justice to all the discussions we've already outlined here. So, yeah, I think we need to set aside one-and-a-half days, as we have frequently done over the years, and just have a discussion.
Michelle, can you clear the vote? I guess, I just see a vote three on here. If we could, I can't see the queue. Who wants to talk? Is anybody in the queue? Okay, nobody's in the queue, so let's go ahead and vote. Sorry, get the vote back up. All right, so the motion is, if you vote yes, you're for a day-and-a-half retreat. If you vote no, it's a no for now. All right, the motion fails, four to three, with Councilmembers Peck, Councilmember Christensen, and Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring, four, and the other four of us against. So it's going to be a day for now. All right, any other questions from city staff to help clarify that?
Based on your other question, I just need some time to think.
Just think. Bring it back, we've got some time, right? All right, let's move on to mayor and council comments. Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring.
So a couple of things I wanted to update. Last week, I went to the Jubilee. Was there anyone else that went? I was it. Thank you, yeah, Sandy came, we were at the same table. But it was really a neat event. I don't typically, you know, attend that kind of function, so it was a whole new set of people. So I was stepping outside of my comfort zone, and I just appreciated the warmth and welcome. I had the opportunity to sit, and I sat at the same table with folks from Inbetween and Habitat for Humanity, and one of the things that, and we were doing a lot of, my wheels start turning, okay, how can we, how can we work together in partnership and make things better, not just through what the city's already doing with them, but like, people I know in my own circle, educators and community activists. But one of the things that folks from Habitat had mentioned, was that they are in dire need of volunteers. So really just wanting to get the word out there, that they could use some volunteers to help build the homes and the wonderful work they do. The other thing is, and I guess this might be directed towards you all, in relation to Ms. Pfeiffer's, Alyssa Pfeiffer's comments about safe shelter, that was very brave of her, and it just, I commend her, and I just appreciate her and respect her being able to come up and show such strength to come forward. So, and as we look at, you know, just maybe some of the things that are causing, you know, what are the root causes, what's causing, what's going on, investigating a little more, the assurance is for her protection as well. Because she came forward at great risk, not just personally, but against retaliation. So, you know, I guess I, as a councilperson, protecting my constituents and my community, you know, just assurance that people who do come forward have, you know, a protection from retaliation. So, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Christensen.
I'd like to say, first of all, to Councilwoman Hidalgo Ferring, join the club. You'll be into all kinds of things you never imagined, and it's really interesting, because we have so many things going on in this community. And I didn't make it to the Jubilee, and I'm sorry that I didn't, because it is, it's an incredibly lively business community we have here. And as for Ms. Pfeiffer, I, because this is sort of a, I mean, that's a very serious accusation, but it's also a legal issue, and I would like us to somehow be informed about the follow-up of that, so that we know what's going on. It's a very serious issue, it does take a lot of courage to be in a position, first of all, to have suffered so much abuse, and then come to an organization that you had hoped would protect you. So I would like some follow-up on that. I have an announcement for people, interested people, there will be a town hall hosted in these council chambers, Saturday at 10 o'clock. This is being hosted by Sonia Jaquez Lewis, one of our representatives, and representative, State Representative Singer, and State Senator Mike Foot. So it'll be very interesting, and we can also be asking them some of the things that have happened over the last year for early childhood development, and some of the things they see happening over the next year in that area too. So it'll be very valuable, it's for everyone, it's for the whole community. So please come if you're interested.
All right, at 11:15, I'm slamming this gavel down, but Councilmember Martin, you can talk until then. Or quicker.
No, I can't. I just wanted to say that I do, I want to reiterate, that I found this to be a completely functional meeting, and I want to thank everyone for that, because I know that it was hard for several of us in various ways. So, thanks, everybody. This is doing the people's business, all of it.
Anything, Harold?
I do need to catch you all afterwards, before you leave.
Okay, that's fine. Eugene?
No comments.
All right, anybody opposed to adjournment? Then we are adjourned.